Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 23, 2021 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable Spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcia.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions, including during this meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. What's next, please?
Mayor, it would be the flag salute.
Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands. Indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we thank you for the life you have allowed us to lead and the privileges you have provided. Let us not take these advantages for granted, but use our lives and resources according to your will. Be with each of us in our daily lives that we present ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
The agenda for the March 23, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 17, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be three presentation and appointments. 3A would be the agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, March 30, 2021, read into the record by John Tuktalian, our deputy city manager.
Mr. Tuktalian, please.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. Next week, we don't have any meetings in the afternoon. However, we do have our council meeting in the evening, starting at 6:00. There's a number of consent items. At 4A will be a report from Water and Power regarding the Western Reservoir and Bel Air Electric Substation Improvement Project. That'll be followed by a report from Community Services and Parks regarding the Verdugo Workforce Development Board's application submission request. That'll be regarding approval for local area subsequent designation and local board recertification. At 4C will be a report from the Police Department regarding amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Counseling Team International to establish a peer support program for employees at the Glendale Police and Fire Departments. Moving on to adoption of ordinances, there may be two adoption of ordinances depending on how a couple of items go tonight. The first, at 7A, would be a temporary urgency ordinance requiring additional hourly pay or hero pay for frontline grocery store and drug retail workers. And at 7B would be a proposed ordinance establishing mayor selection process and a proposed resolution establishing the Housing Authority Chair selection process. Under action items, Gunna Water and Powell provide another report regarding the 100% Clean Energy by 2030 study, followed by a report from Management Services regarding the background on the CalPERS retirement system and seeking direction for the creation of a pension review committee. 8C will be another report from Management Services regarding an ordinance prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastics at city facilities. 8D would be a report from Public Works regarding acceptance of grant funds from the California Department of Transportation for the low-carbon transit operations program. And 8E will be a report from Public Works regarding this commercial solid franchise contract award. Finally, there's one last item on that evening's agenda, actually two. Under hearings, Community Development will have an appeal on Design View Board's denial of DRB case located at 910 Laird. And the night will conclude with a presentation on the Riverside Drive Speed Limit Study. That concludes next week's report.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. Next item, please.
Next item would be March for Meals proclamation.
Thank you. Are we...am I going first, or Mr. Golanian, you go first?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. I'm going to ask Onik Bulanikian, our Director of Community Services and Parks, to make an introduction, and then we have a short video clip to share with you.
Thank you, Mr. Bulanikian.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council. The City of Glendale Senior Nutrition News Program has been delivering meals for over 40 years. This year, we started off delivering 3,600 meals per month, and of course, due to COVID-19, we increased our meals to 14,000 meals per month for 1,167 unduplicated seniors per month. In addition, staff has distributed over 1,000 hygiene bags to all senior meal participants and has made over 5,000 well-being calls by our case management staff. Throughout the pandemic, Meals on Wheels of America has given the City of Glendale additional funding in the amount of $125,000 to expand our meal delivery program, and also an additional $4,000 to assist seniors that have pets, so staff can work with each senior that has pets and purchasing pet food and pet supplies on an emergency basis. With that being said, I would like to share a video prepared by our friends over at GTV6 in celebrating March for Meals Month.
The City of Glendale is especially excited to celebrate March for Meals Month in 2021. We are recognizing the elderly nutrition program and what it has meant to so many of our Glendale seniors this past year in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since 1979, Glendale has served over 2.2 million meals to seniors in our community. Meals have been served at our three congregate meal sites and our home-delivered meal program. The Community Services and Parks Department is proud to be a part of the Federal Older Americans Act. It was signed by President Nixon in 1972, establishing and funding national nutrition programs like ours.
It's a balanced meal, and it's sort of like the bedrock of my nutrition.
El almuerzo es bastante saludable.
This has been wonderful. I've been happy and healthy this whole time.
Not too much salt, not too much sugar. It's a very good meal for seniors.
Everything is okay. Fantastic. The meals here are very clean, good, service.
They have good food, healthy food.
They give me lunch every day. It is wonderful. It's wonderful food. It's healthy food, and they're there for you.
We don't just deliver a nutritious meal, we also serve at-risk seniors suffering from hunger and isolation with well-being calls to ensure Glendale seniors are safe in their own homes.
The most important thing, of course, is that I have enough food to eat. I do very much appreciate it. Thank you.
So I really count on the food and all the nice people that are here. Thank you very much.
I'm glad that I come now, the way it is now with COVID, they still will have this service.
And these people have been wonderful, so thank you very much for everything.
There's a lot of people around the world they can't...they have no access to food. It's something we all should appreciate as Americans.
It's great, because I don't know how to cook, and I come once a day, get some food.
It's wonderful that we have the adult center, and I appreciate the luncheons. It's very helpful. I'm a single person, and I don't do...I don't know how to do much cooking, so I appreciate these meals. So thank you very much.
Then I found myself without work, and I found just needing some help, because I didn't know where to go. And someone told me about this program here in Glendale for senior citizens, and it's been helping in a lot of ways. It's been helping financially and it's been helping, you know, every way there is.
I'm 65, and I don't have much, and I come here, and all I have to do is ask when I'm here, and they give me everything I need as a senior. Thank you.
Join us in supporting this campaign and bringing awareness to the City of Glendale's Elderly Nutrition Program.
Thank you. Okay. Now I read City of Glendale, California, the proclamation. Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign to recognize the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the senior nutrition program, both congregate and home-delivered, has served our Glendale community with over 2.2 million meals since 1979. Whereas during these unprecedented times, this essential service is more important than ever to our seniors. And whereas employees and volunteers are the backbone of the senior nutrition program as they not only serve and deliver nutritious meals to seniors who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but place caring concern and attention to their welfare. And now, therefore, I, Viraj Agajanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor the senior nutrition program, the seniors served, and the essential nutrition staff and volunteers who care for them. March for Meals Month, Viraj Agajanian, Mayor, March 23, 2021. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, too. Okay, now what's next, please?
Mayor, next would be consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
I'll move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Now I would like to invite my colleagues to share any comments that they have, and I go to Councilmember Kusakian.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council staff. First of all, before I make my comments, let me just say that we all, I'm sure, join the families of those affected by the shootings in Atlanta and more recently in Boulder, Colorado, and we stand together in keeping those families in our prayers and thoughts. I know many are disheartened by the recent acts of terror and violence, but we must not be deterred in our efforts as Americans to demand better from our leaders, whether it's on mental health or on sensible background checks for guns, or to do the hard work in ensuring that we have a society that is not only tolerant, but accepting and embracing our differences that make each of us unique as Americans. Now, I want to just say something briefly. I know this will be addressed later on in the evening, but the mayor was kind enough to grant a request to add a resolution that will state our city council's position clearly on the matter of hate crimes that target our Asian-American and Pacific Islander brothers and sisters. Recently, this has become more of a public issue, and truth be told, I asked that this be agendized after our school district board passed a similar resolution and after Councilmember Devine spoke up about this last week, for which I thank her. And I will not pretend that our adoption of this resolution will somehow magically make the racist behavior or sentiments that are afflicting the AAPI community and others go away. I wish it was that simple, but unfortunately, none of us, whoever we are and however we are, or forbearers, have found ourselves on these shores, are so lucky. But I do believe that this is important to show our AAPI community here in the city that we stand up, we stand with them, and will not tolerate those who denigrate them or any other minority group. I've grown up alongside many Korean, Filipino, Vietnamese, Chinese, Japanese, and others, close friends and dear friends growing up here in Glendale throughout my more than 30 years of living in the city, and I know this to be a fact, that our city is better off because we have had this type of diversity, more than any other reason. I have witnessed my friends who have worked to acculturate themselves and adopt American values in ways going so far as to adopt Anglicanized versions of their names in order to avoid discrimination, yet to no avail, as these acts of hate continue today in the 21st century in one of the most developed and wealthiest countries in the world. Just last year, in April, after the pandemic started almost a year ago, a Korean-American resident in Glendale, actually in La Crescenta, was harassed by a passerby who called him names and cursed at him, and as this gentleman walked in the street with his family, he posted a video of it online, which was incredibly disturbing, and I was utterly disgusted then that such interactions can happen right here under our noses, but unfortunately, I wasn't surprised. You know, we haven't done enough to recognize the contributions. You know, we have had Glendale among two...of the two Glendale Medal of Honor recipients, one who's honored by Burbank, because he lived in Burbank later on. The other was a Japanese-American who was...who lived here in Glendale, was born in Glendale, I believe, Sadao Unimori, served in the 100th Infantry Battalion, one of the most decorated units during the Second World War comprised entirely of Japanese-Americans. This gentleman served in the ward as his family was locked up in Manzanar in a relocation camp. Despite the numerous and countless contributions of our AAPI residents have made to our city, I know from many of my conversations that many still feel an increase in harassment and hate, and it has hit a peak during this pandemic emergency for various reasons. So in addition to this resolution tonight, I want to state this clearly into the camera and into whoever is watching. If you are among those who thinks that our city is being brought down by all of the immigrants who live here, you are the problem, not the immigrants. If you believe that people who do not look like you are inferior or less deserving of respect than those with whom you identify, you, not they, are the problem. I want to let...also let those who post supportive messages online know that the problem of racism doesn't...isn't going to end with just one Facebook or Twitter post or a word here or there, or even a resolution. It is something we all have to actively participate in and fight against, and treating our residents with dignity and respect is a first step, and hopefully, tonight our actions will be another step in that direction. So I know this wasn't agendized, Mr. Mayor, but I thank you because I know that you share this concern. I thank Councilmember Devine, and I know others, my colleagues who didn't speak out also share this concern, and thank staff for bringing this back so quickly. I want to also bring up a couple of really quick points. I know I went on too long. The LA Times recently wrote a story about the City of Los Angeles' granny flat policy. They had an interesting article about some pre-approved designs. I know that a one-size-fits-all solution is not one that's ideal for Glendale, but however I have...I would like to ask staff to look into possibility where appropriate, what designs would meet the standards of our city to help expedite processes for granting these accessory dwelling units, even though I know that there's also a timeline associated that the state has mandated. But I thought the LA Times article was interesting, and if there's something that similarly we can do in Glendale, I'd like to ask staff to explore that. So if any of my colleagues would like to second that?
I would second.
I will second.
Thank you. And the light posts in some of our residential neighborhoods are starting to look pretty drab. I recently walked in the Rossmoyn neighborhood with some friends, and those posts look like they're in pretty poor shape and could use a coat of paint, some TLC. If I could ask staff to look into that, I don't know if that requires a second, just an observation, but if it does...I'm not asking for a report, just an observation I'm pointing out, and hopefully, staff can take care of it without any further issue. And I would also like to ask when the urban forestry update is coming to council, because while I was walking around, I noticed along the parkways many areas where it looked like there once was trees and are left fallow, and it would be nice to see some of those areas around the city where there used to be trees and now there's just either a hole or emptiness for it to be replaced. And I have some other items, but they can wait for next week. So thank you for your patience and time.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think already said what needs to be said. We all respond and react to these incomprehensible actions in different ways. The, you know, the uptick in incidents against people of Asian extraction, Asian heritage, I guess hits me a little bit more directly, not that it should matter, but I...and some of you know I lived 18 years in East Asia and have two kids that are mixed race, Asian and Jewish, so it just has a particular, I guess, personal dimension, but I know that it affects all of us in different ways and at different levels. So I will...I will leave that there. I do want to honor a friend of mine who died this past weekend and ask that we adjourn in her honor. Her name is Karen Ness. She...and there's a picture of her. She left us after a many-years-fight with a rare and aggressive form of leukemia. She had a big spirit, was kind, loving, always cheerful. I got to know her about three years ago through the Glendale Environmental Coalition. She would come to our meetings, come to the rallies. She cared deeply for the environment, for people, for animals. She was worried about what we were doing to the climate and how we could take action locally to stop our impact on the climate. And she would come out to fight even when she was tired or when she was having an episode of what she called chemo brain. She beat back her cancer and was doing well for a few years, but then had a relapse. What...you know, one thing to add is, she actually called me last Wednesday from the hospital. She was at Kaiser, and she just called out of the blue and asked how we're doing with our clean energy programs and what's the city doing specifically with composting, with plastics? And so I gave her an update, and I asked, "How are you doing?" And she said, "Not too good. I'm in the hospital. I'm hoping I might go back into remission so that I can get a stem cell transplant." But I guess that was not meant to be. So I will take it as her dying wish that I redouble efforts on the environment and just want to make, you know, this acknowledgement of her wonderful life and the way she impacted so many people around her.
Thank you.
So there's that. If I could move on, it's a little bit hard to transition from that, but I do want to move on to somewhat more mundane issues. One of them is, and I'm sorry I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, and I'm kind of repeating myself, but I continue to get emails about businesses violating ordinances or otherwise behaving in unneighborly ways. I think we all have been getting these. You know, there's a restaurant, and I'm not going to name names, playing, you know, extremely loud music without a sound, what do you call it, amplified sound permit, allowing customers to sit outside smoking hookah when there's no permit for that. Another one is an auto shop, which I mentioned earlier at another meeting, you know, loud... Another one is an auto shop, which I mentioned earlier at another meeting, you know, loud outdoor work compressor running right in a residential neighborhood, car washing in the street. And it's not just businesses. We're also hearing what seems to be more and more cases of street dumping, illegal work in historic neighborhoods, illegal grading, just, just, I think yesterday we got a message about illegal grading. It's just, it's, at least my perception is that it's, it's kind of become out of control and really affecting quality of life. I know we can't legislate decency, but, you know, we should be doing everything we can to enforce the rules that we do have on the books. And it seems like we go out, we certainly respond, but we don't always take it to the, you know, the full extent of the law that we have authority to take it to. So I don't know, you know, again, it's like what council member Kasaki just brought up. It's more of an observation. I hope that when we look through our budgets, we can consider maybe beefing up our staffing and neighborhood services. It's, I understand many years ago it was brought down, and maybe it just, we need, we need to do more in the area of enforcing codes and making sure we bring back the quality of life that people, our residents, expect from us. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it from there. I also have something else, but I'll wait till next week.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian, is there anything you want to add, or we go to Ms. Divine?
I have nothing this week, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Divine?
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and also I would just want my sympathies and my condolences for the killing in exactly a week ago in Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, where senseless killing took the lives of eight people. Anyway, with that, now, staff comments. Mr. Gulanyan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council. I'm going to ask, invite Peter Zovak, our Assistant Director of Community Development, who has an announcement to make regarding the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program.
Mr. Zovak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if the city clerk can please put up the Thank you. City staff would like to make this announcement. It's with regards to the California COVID Rent Relief Program. The State of California has established a new rental assistance program for Glendale residents and landlords using funding from Round Two of the Federal Stimulus Act that was passed in January. The new program is being called the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program, and it allocates 2.6 billion in federal rental assistance to California, of which $332 million is specifically allocated to Los Angeles County, including Glendale. And it's even more impactful in that this funding, or this allocation of funding to Los Angeles County excludes the cities of Los Angeles and Long Beach. They received direct funding from the Department of Treasury. So this pot of money can go a very long way in being able to assist LA County residents, specifically Glendale renters and landlords. Unlike previous programs, both Glendale tenants and landlords can apply to this program directly. The program provides rent reimbursement to landlords for unpaid rent accrued between April 1, 2020, and March 31, 2021. It can also pay for rent in advance and for delinquent utility bills as well during this period. To be eligible, a renter household cannot exceed, income cannot exceed 80% of the area's median income. The household must have incurred a financial hardship due to COVID-19 and are experiencing housing instability. If eligible, either a landlord or a renter can initiate the application process. The process opened last Monday on March 15, and is planned to continue until funding has been spent, and they estimate that to be a while, being open a while now with that amount of funding allocated to LA County. Applicants interested in applying to the state, the state is only accepting applications online, and the application can be found at the state website, and that state website's on the slide. It's called housingiskey.com. That's housingiskey.com. If there are any individuals that need assistance or additional information, they can call a number set up, a hotline number set up by the State of California as well, and that number's also on the screen. It's 1-833-430-2122, and that hotline is open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. What we have found in monitoring the state is that they're rolling out this program and every day providing more enhancements and more services. So we encourage everyone to check the state's website daily for any new information, new update, things of that nature. And just to let you know, to help promote the program, housing staff has sent an informational email blast to 22,000 addresses from our Affordable Housing interest list. We've also sent notices to our landlords and tenant social service agencies that we do deal with. The city's PIO office has also sent out social media postings, and we have posted it on various webpages at the city's website. And we are now in the process of preparing a traditional mailer that will be going out to every residential household in Glendale and every Glendale landlord of record that we have on file. And so we will be, we'll continue to be promoting this program as long as it's available. And that's my announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zovak.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? Just wanted to kind of ask Peter something or clarify something that I read. So, and I don't think you said this, but to be eligible, you need, you mentioned you need to be at or below 80% of the area median income. What I read is that they're going to calculate your, your income, not pre-COVID, but somehow during a time period that would include this last year of COVID, so that people that have been impacted and have lower income now, even though they might have had a higher income before, would be eligible. Can you just clarify that?
Correct. That's what they will be doing, and that's what we've done with our Emergency Rental Assistance Program as well. It's your income at time of application. So you're right, last year, if you were in good financial shape and didn't qualify, that's not to say you won't qualify this time around, especially if you've been impacted from an employment perspective due to COVID-19. So they will take your income that you have now and project it out for 12 months, and that would be the qualifying factor for this program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zovak. Now, I would go to, I will go to community events announcement if there is anything, okay? And now I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcement. Now, let's listen to our callers.
Mayor, I do have one caller.
So let's go to the caller.
Ms. Valentine?
Yes?
Go ahead, you're live.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chevy Chase Homeowners Association held a yearly meeting last week, which was very productive. I found out about the neighbors on Linda Vista, that the action of Glendale Police Department made such a big change for our quality of life down on the Chevy Chase bottom. I don't want to give away the strategy they used, and I hope nobody gives that away. It worked. We had quality of life for two months, and I appreciate that. And so it's funny how things work out without a plan and a lawyer. And nice to meet Peter Zovak, even though his picture was tiny. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Mr. German, is there any other caller?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Now, we go to Mr. Gulanyan, I guess, Senior Services Committee Update Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council. This was listed on the agenda as item number 10 for information only, but since we have a quite a lengthy agenda to cover, I appreciate you moving it up. We'll have a report from Community Services and Parks Department. Teresa Alexanian, our Deputy Director of Community Services and Parks, will make that presentation. This is in response to Councilmember Divine's request.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Gulanyan. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. My name is Teresa Alexanian. I'm the Deputy Director with Community Services and Parks, and I wanted to do a brief presentation as it relates to the Senior Services Committee and what we have been doing with the committee. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, I can see your screen. But I don't have a copy of it. Do we have copy of it? Oh, okay, I have it. I'm sorry, I have it. Thank you.
Just as a way of background, staff was asked by council to look into establishing a senior services committee, and back in May 2017, staff prepared a feasibility study and did some research and submitted a memo, and as a result, staff was provided direction to look into establishing a senior services committee. We conducted a senior needs assessment in September of 2017 and presented a report to the City Council on April 17, 2018. The senior needs assessment was, the results of the senior needs assessment was a six key recommendation, where City Council accepted the needs assessment and directed staff to form a senior services committee, which was one of the recommendations from the needs assessment, and also directed the city and approved the city to become a member of AARP Network of Age-Friendly Cities, which was another recommendation on the needs assessment. The six key recommendations that came out of the needs assessment were to develop housing strategies for seniors to find alternative housing options, create a senior services committee to meet quarterly to share and receive information, to develop an intra-agency plan with public safety to educate seniors on emergency preparedness of their homes and the facilities they frequent, work with senior services network of stakeholders to develop and provide trainings on healthcare and caregiver training and support, to work with the senior services network of stakeholders to promote senior safety by providing educational workshops regarding senior fraud and scams, elder abuse, and pedestrian safety, and to become a member of AARP, as I mentioned. So at the meeting, we essentially completed two of the recommendations, which was to establish the committee and to become a member of AARP. The formation of the committee, coordination of the committee was led by staff, and the committee members, there's a 13-member committee who serve two-year terms. It's composed of five members from the field of gerontology and aging, four city staff, three hospital representatives, and one senior representative from the community. And the members are identified by staff and approved by the city manager. The meetings are held in, were held in person, pre-COVID, were quarterly meetings that took place on Thursdays at 3:00 PM. And we established the, and when we established the committee, the first meeting, normally it's November, February, May, and August, and the meetings are generally held at the Adult Recreation Center or Spar Heights Community Center, which are our two senior community centers. The current committee members are as follows. Our Chair Camille Levy recently left, so we do have one vacant spot on the committee, which staff is going to work with the city manager to appoint. But as you could see, these are the 13 members that make up the current board. The first year goal for the committee was to review the six recommendations in the needs assessment and to prioritize recommendations and develop a strategic plan to address each of those collaborations with community organizations. The highlights from the first year of the committee's establishment, we had a presentation on housing by the Community Development Department. Peter Zovak came to the committee and provided information about housing and what's available to seniors and what the city is working on. We had a presentation by the Fire Department regarding emergency preparedness, a presentation on the city's point in town, homeless count by the Homeless Services Section, a Public Works Transit Section presentation and demonstration on the dial-a-ride and the beeline services for seniors, and discussion on information and resource gathering of programs and services, outlets for seniors and their families in Glendale. So this was some information that was shared with the committee over the last year as they held their meetings. We did have two events, which were part of the key recommendations, and the first one was staff organized an emergency preparedness event, which took place on October 5, 2019, and it was a very successful event in partnership with many organizations. We had about 150 seniors in attendance. The event took place at the Police Community Room and was designed to give emergency resources to seniors in the community. The event invited different vendors, hosted presentations from experts on emergency preparedness topics, provided raffle prizes, and served lunch. We had tables where the seniors were able to go from table to table, gather information, and learn about the 12 steps of emergency preparedness, and were able to take that information back so that they could prepare themselves. The second event that we hosted was a senior scam stoppers event, and this was recommendation number five from the needs assessment, and it was to provide senior safety workshops. The event was hosted, we hosted a senior scam stoppers event on January 28, 2020, in partnership with the Glendale Police Department and WISE and Healthy Aging. The event featured speakers from the United States Department of Justice, United States Postal Inspectors, Department of Business Oversight, and the Glendale Police Department, and covered topics such as senior scams, and provided resources for the seniors in the community to learn how to not get cheated or scammed. The event brought in over 200 seniors, and as you can see from the pictures, it was a very successful event, and the seniors also had lunch and learned a lot about how to avoid scams and not allow the callers, because at this point, we were getting, the seniors were getting a lot of crank calls and information stealing, so this was a great informational event for the seniors. And then the COVID, unfortunately, the pandemic happened, and the senior services committee stopped meeting. We had a meeting that was scheduled on March 19, which was postponed because we were no longer able to meet in person. We were also working on an old-timers picnic, which was scheduled for October 3 of last year, which was also postponed. We shifted priorities to senior nutrition and collaboration with service providers to ensure the senior safety during this time. As you heard from Mr. Bolanikin, and as you have heard over time, our need for services increased by 250%. We went from serving 3,600 meals a month to about 14,000 meals a month right now. And so staff worked really hard to shift gears and be able to provide the services that were currently needed during this pandemic. We worked on hygiene bags, and most recently have pivoted to assisting seniors to sign up for vaccinations and working with our senior services committee, of course, keeping them informed throughout this period, even though we weren't having committee meetings. Staff and Maggie Kavarian and staff were doing a great job of keeping the senior services committee informed and working with them to be able to provide the services that were needed to the senior community at this time. And we strategically partnered with some of those, our committee members, like the hospitals and police department and the fire department and the library, and providing resources for the seniors to take home for activities, or the fire department assisting with grocery meal purchases and helping us coordinate the vaccinations. Looking ahead, we are going to resume our senior services committee meetings. We have one scheduled on March 25 via WebEx, so we will reconvene, and we have one seat So we will reconvene and we have one seat to fill. Our Chair Camille Levy, who retired and moved away, so we will be filling her seat. We are also, staff has also been working on a new senior needs assessment for 2021, 2022. And this is one of the requirements as part of being a member of the AARP Network of Age Friendly Cities, is to update the action plan. So staff is looking into conducting a new needs assessment to evaluate what are the senior needs in our community and working to, working on the key recommendations that we haven't had a chance to work on. And also, staff is working on a resource guide for seniors, working with our committee members and our partner community agencies. So we're working on a comprehensive resource guide so we could have information available to our senior community. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Oh, first, on the last picture. Remembering the last picture? You know, I see two of my current colleagues and two former colleagues. I didn't know you guys did that. This is the first time I've seen this picture. What you guys are doing behind me? Don't you feel bad for that? And then they have, yeah. Okay.
This was in May for Older Americans Month. This is when you helped introduce a proclamation for Older Americans Month.
But I didn't know that they're doing this behind me. But anyway, I have a question before I go to my colleagues. On page three. I mean, I can't understand what it says, page three. If you can go. On the very first item. Number one. Develop housing strategies for seniors to find alternative housing options. What does that mean?
This recommendation was as a result of-
I know what the sentence says, but how are you going to accomplish that? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Of course. Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, that specific recommendation was actually put on hold for that very reason because this was when Measure S was established and City Council was making decisions on, you know, finding strategies to provide housing for the senior and the low-income community. So that specific recommendation was actually put on hold and the committee was going to reevaluate that recommendation when the City Council had provided more direction. And that was kind of decided when Peter Zovak came to the committee and did a presentation. The committee at that time decided to wait to see what the council direction would be and what the city would do overall before they reconvene to come up with some options and opportunities. So that specific recommendation was, has not been vetted through the committee, but it was as a result of the need for housing and low-income housing for the community and the senior community.
So I had only one question and I have no answer to it. Is that what it is? All right, that's fine. Thank you for the information. Can we go to page nine? The picture. Page nine.
Mayor, I also believe that Councilmember Divine is trying to make a comment at the same time. She was waiting.
Okay, no, but let me go to page nine.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll chime in later. Thank you.
Page nine? Page nine.
Is this the page nine you're referring to, Mayor Agajanian?
Maybe it's the colors are here, or maybe page eight? There are pictures. No, no, I'm sorry, page eight. Because here it's so light. It's, I don't know, maybe it's, I think eight. Yeah. That picture on the right bottom. I was in that meeting and they, I thought that's very helpful to listen to the experts. Regardless whether you're a senior or younger person, I was there on that meeting. And it was very beneficial and it was a great meeting. I can't remember the name of the lady, and there were a few others who presented how not to be cheated, let's say, that senior scam stoppers. And it was a great meeting and I wish we could have done or arranged it maybe at a later time, similar. I just wanted to bring to your attention. So maybe you can make a note of it and when we get the chance to get together, maybe redo what you have done at that time. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Divine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to give a shout out to Maggie Cavanyan and the staff that works on this task force. You know, I brought this forward because I'm well aware that Glendale has an aging population. And there are a lot of issues that our aging population faces. And it's always good to have a collaboration that is working to address those issues. I want to, first of all, talk about the housing strategies and options. And the idea behind that one, that was the one, Mayor, that you asked about.
Yes.
One of the strategies that was proposed that we had, when I attended a meeting, was that there are oftentimes seniors that live alone and they're in a big house. And then there are other seniors who are in apartments and they can't afford it, but would be willing to live with or share a house or a room with another senior, companionship, lower rent, et cetera, et cetera. And so that was one of the objectives of this, looking into different housing strategies as well. There was a group at the meeting where we discussed this. And I don't know what happened to them. It was Angels something or other in there here in Glendale, where they unite seniors, bring them together like that. You know, do you need a roommate? You know, this is the kind of option or strategy that we were talking about that this senior service task force was talking about. So perhaps that's something that they can follow through with as well. Teresa, was the senior health fair part of this task force? Wasn't there a health fair on the Artsop or what?
Oh, the senior street fest, yes. Mayor Agajanian, Councilmember Divine, yes, we do have an annual senior street fest where we hold an event on Artsop. But that wasn't necessarily as a result of the senior services committee, but that was an event that we do host and we do have tables and resources that are available to the seniors and provide lunch out on Artsop for the seniors. And so, yes, we do have that event, but it was not as a result of the senior services committee.
Right, but that's another event that we can look forward to seeing. So I think it's very obvious that this is a task force that we need in our city. I think the objectives are well-founded, the assessments are necessary. You know, our seniors are vulnerable, especially during the pandemic, and I really do commend our staff. I think the programs that you provided are very impressive, very impressive. And I'm so proud of all of you. And as I say, the collaboration between our hospitals, our police department, our fire department, and how we can educate and protect our seniors and help them with all of their needs. I would like to, maybe in the future, I will look into, I would like to, for all of us, my colleagues and I, to look into this becoming a commission with real teeth in it. And although I think you all are doing a fabulous job. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there, okay.
Ms. Ma'am.
Okay. Ardy Kasak, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Councilmember Divine's words. Thank her for bringing this issue forward and to light. And it's very impressive work that you're doing, Teresa. Kudos to you, Maggie, the whole team in Community Services and Parks. And I also echo the sentiment that hopefully one day, maybe soon, we can make this into a permanent commission because the need is there as we have a more rapidly aging population as baby boomers become part of that senior population. We ought to look at, you know, how we can serve them best and who better to tell us than the individuals who have those decades and decades of experience and knowledge and wisdom that they can share with us in the city. So thank you so much. That was very enlightening. I liked a lot of what the committee has addressed. The identity theft in particular, I know tends to be a very, very important issue, especially during this pandemic. So many scammers taking advantage of them. And also, I would like to ask them to look into the impact of this pandemic and the isolation on mental health of our seniors. You know, many of the folks who were isolated from family for a year, I know how difficult it was on myself and my family. I can only imagine for those seniors who were maybe in homes or were not close to family that they could get too easily. So mental health will be an issue that I will always try to champion and raise and give voice to those who need our help. So if we can maybe have them look into that as well, that would be great. Thank you.
Mayor Agajanian, Councilmember Kasakin, we do actually have the Caring Caller Program, which the Glendale Police Department is kind enough to partner with us. And they are calling seniors who are part of our program. And any seniors we get referrals to, we refer back to the police department. And we do have people who call and check on them to make sure that they are okay and have been doing it during this pandemic. But yes, we definitely will continue to look into those.
Thank you. Is there, Mr. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to say ditto to what Councilmembers Kasakin and Divine said. I think this is great. I really got a lot out of reading the report. In fact, I wasn't even aware of this, so this was really helpful to me. One, well, two things. One of them is where would somebody go with suggestions and ideas for this task force? I've not long ago got an email from a gentleman, I think his name is Timothy Wall, who had some interesting ideas about helping seniors with employment and also writing workshops and some things that have been important in his life. I think he was, it was in his later years as a senior that he started writing and he wrote a book and it's been, I guess, a big part of his life. And so, anyway, I didn't really know where to direct him. And if there's a place for people that have ideas or maybe want to get involved, maybe somebody wants to be part of the task force, how would they go about that?
Councilmember Brotman, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, anytime the community has any suggestions or recommendations, they are welcome to reach out to us. They can call us directly and provide their feedback and suggestions. Or they could also attend the meetings. And if anyone is interested, they can call me directly at 818-548-2000. And we're happy to take their suggestions and look into them and also bring a report to the committee who can vet through whatever suggestion they have. If they are interested in becoming committee members, again, they could reach out to us at that number and we're happy to put them through to the senior services section and be able to consider them for the next opportunity if there is a committee position that might be open.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, I guess we go to the next. Thank you, Teresa Alexanian. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
And we go to next item, Mr. Jeremian. Do we have a caller, we have a caller, I guess?
Mayor, for this item, item number 10, we do not have a caller. But as we were transitioning into item number 10, I did receive a call for item number six, community event announcements.
So let's listen. Yes, let's listen as community event announcements.
Hermine Tumanyan, you're live, Hermine.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm speaking to you all today to address concerns and complaints our neighborhoods have had pertaining to the activities held at Camp Bob Walzroth located at 1041 Shirley Street. Throughout the years, Camp Walzroth has organized events while additionally renting out their space to individuals, organizations, and filming crews. Just as an example, two weeks ago, a filming crew was brought to the side for a few days and with that came an unacceptable amount of traffic and noise. There were many huge trucks, vans that constantly passed in and out of our space.
Ms. Tumanyan, maybe I have problem? I can't hear her properly what you are saying. Is there any way you speak, are you using your cellular phone?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Don't put it on speaker. Can you talk to the phone?
Is this better? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. May I continue or you want me to start over?
No, start over because I didn't get, I missed.
I apologize for that. Okay, I'm speaking to all of you. Thank you so much for this time to address concerns and complaints our neighborhoods have had pertaining to the activities held at Camp Bob Walzroth located at 1041 Shirley Street. Throughout the years, Camp Walzroth has organized events while additionally renting out their space to individuals, organizations, and filming crews. Just as an example, two weeks ago, a filming crew was brought to the side for a few days. And with that, obviously, came an unacceptable amount of traffic and noise. There were many huge trucks and vans that constantly passed in and out of our streets for several days in a row. When an 18-wheeler truck parked in front of my house, I spoke to Glendale City Management and I was told that there was no law that stated that many trucks, vans, and private vehicles cannot pass in our streets, even if they cause traffic and noise. He said he will send a police officer, but I told him there was already an officer on site. I was told that they know the law, they know what to do, and they have permits for everything, so the neighborhood cannot do anything about it. We demand more respect, obviously, from city officials and know that this was not an appropriate way to handle things. The cul-de-sac and the little bridge are far too small and narrow to comfortably allow vans and 18-wheeler trucks to pass by several times a day. Additionally, the camp constantly has vendors that come to store food and give out supplies, which causes even more traffic in our streets. For such a small street like ours, there is simply too much traffic and commotion. Not only does this disturb our peace, obviously, but it also poses as a safety issue for our kids, dogs, families that spend time outdoor and ride their bikes. Additionally, the noise of singing, screaming, speakers, megaphones that is created from the camp activities is unacceptable. Our comfort basically is unwillingly being taken from us, honestly. We caught two counselors on camera trying to open my car doors. I was harassed on my own property by a guest who was attending the camp and there is a corresponding police report on file. We are heavily concerned about instances where individuals from the camp smoke on the side. Let's not forget that they are camped located inside a quiet, peaceful, and calm residential location. Even during the citywide stay-at-home period, the camp continued to have vans for transporting people entering in and out of the premises. We will not tolerate going through this nightmare again, as we did for several years. And after countless attempts of showing initiation, emailing the camp CEO, supervisors, organizing meetings, communicating with members of Glendale City Councils and inspectors, it still remains a question to be answered how the camp receives a permit to conduct business such as renting out outside companies and individuals in residential area. We are emotionally drained and feel as though we are not being heard. Thank you so very much for your time.
Excuse me, Ms. Tumanyan. I'm just trying to understand. Is this the camp that few years ago, the neighbors, maybe you and few neighbors complained? And I was there, we met with the management of the camp. Am I right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
And what happened was they were supposed to meet with you and then this is two, three years ago.
Yes, yes, Mr. Agajanian, it was just false promises. They just- Yes, yes, Mr. Agajanian. It was just false promises. They just kept quiet for one day or maybe 24 hours left. And then it starts, right now, as I'm speaking to you, from early mornings such as 5:30, I would say, 5:45, cars are just driving in and out constantly, constantly. So, this is an ongoing issue which looks like never ever is going to end.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tumanyan. Thank you for calling.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I mean, staff can look into this? Mr. Golanyan or Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, definitely.
Because I remember a few years ago, I was there, and the neighbors came on the campus, and the management were there. We went to this big hall, and apparently, everything was sold out two, three years ago. I didn't hear about it. So, if you can look into it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor, we are going back to item number eight, eight action items, 8A Information Services Department regarding expansion of wireless internet services to city-owned parks and related facilities within the city of Glendale. Motion to provide direction to staff on possible expansion of wireless internet services within the city-owned parks and related facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, this item is being presented to you in response to councilmembers Devine and Kasakian's request. And I'm going to turn it over to Jason Bradford, our chief information officer, for that report.
Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am pleased to present a report on the possible expansion of wireless internet services to city-owned parks and related facilities. And I'm here tonight seeking council direction on possible next steps. And I'm just going to wait for the PowerPoint to load, and it is loading. Jason, can you control it from here? I cannot. Don't know if you're sharing it. Are you sharing it on the webex?
Yeah.
There you go. There we go.
Is that better?
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Okay, tonight, very briefly, I will cover some background information, discuss some design considerations in developing the Wi-Fi architecture, briefly discuss what said architecture would generally look like at any given location, followed by with what I would call a very ballpark cost estimate, and concluding my comments with one possible next step for council consideration. Ultimately, the report was aimed at answering a basic question, could we do it? And if so, generally, what it would look like and some type of cost estimate. So, with that, and by way of background, for more than a decade, Wi-Fi based broadband services have been available to the public at several city facilities, including all Glendale library locations and within public meeting spaces in the several city buildings such as council chamber, police and fire station 21 community rooms, as well as Perkins Community Room. In addition, there's been limited deployment of Wi-Fi at the city's four community centers, Civic Autonim, as well as the Dunsmore Community Building and Pacific Edison Pool. However, up to this point, there's not been wide-scale deployment of Wi-Fi based internet services across city locations. When considering the deployment of a public Wi-Fi network over a wide geographic area, there are three design considerations that are critical in developing a robust network: speed, high availability, and the proper bandwidth. Best way to achieve that is to extend the Wi-Fi network using fiber optic cable. Fiber optic cabling is the medium capable of supporting the highest possible speeds, and therefore, the best technology for providing robust, high-capacity, low-latency Wi-Fi network services. Based on that, we designed the architecture to leverage existing city assets, namely, the existing fiber, the existing GWP fiber, and the planned fiber expansion as part of GWP's fiber business. We also have established connectivity to a Tier One carrier hotel in Los Angeles, which serves as the hub of internet connectivity for the Western United States, and really provides us the necessary speed, bandwidth, and redundancy to support broad deployment of a Wi-Fi architecture throughout the city. In addition, we have the proper security controls in place with next-generation firewalls and network access controls. As I mentioned, we would be leveraging existing fiber. This slide for council reference shows the locations that currently have existing fiber present. And the locations on the right side of the screen indicate locations we could do a lateral run from existing fiber at those locations. All the other locations would be dependent on GWP's planned fiber, which they will be coming to the council with a report in the very near future. So, this is what a basic build would look like at any given location in that where we would deploy Wi-Fi. And it's comprised of three main elements. First, site connectivity, as I mentioned. Fiber would have to be run to the particular location if not already present. Second would be networking equipment, and that's basically the network switches, the uninterruptible power supply, and the equipment enclosure. And then lastly, of course, the access points themselves, along with some type of way to mount them, depending on where we are putting the access point. All told, we considered 40 locations in the city, basically the Parks and Rec portfolio of parks and facilities they managed, so basically everything. All open space park locations, community buildings, centers, athletic fields. And determining the number of access points, it was really straightforward. We took the size of the area being covered with the building and did just simple math. Every 500 feet, we put an internal access point. And for outdoor, we assumed a 200-foot radius. And we also assumed ubiquitous coverage, meaning no gaps in coverage, as people tend to roam around the park or facility. Again, this is looked at what we could do, not necessarily what we should do, as we are looking for that council direction tonight. So, based on the build and the assumptions, the total cost is presented here. And this is really just, again, a very ballpark preliminary cost. And I'll speak to, a little bit more to that in a minute. But it's roughly about $4.4 million. And you can see the cost of the fiber run is about 20% of the cost. I've actually divided the costs, and you can divide them up into really three tiers. And really, the first tier is comprised of 25 locations. And these are the relatively smaller parks and facilities in the city. And it represents roughly 30% of the cost. The next tier, the nine locations, it's interesting to note that this is the most expensive part of the fiber runs for these nine locations. And this is really because of the proximity of the locations to where the fiber would be. The most expensive runs being Glen Oaks Park, Shoal Canyon Ball Field, and Dumagen Park. Lastly, the most expensive locations, it's all really driven by the electronics. As I mentioned, the size and area of the location being covered is really driving it. These six locations, four already have fiber at the site, with the exception of the sports complex in Verdugo Park. So, the cost of fiber is really not driving the most expensive locations. As far as the cost, what I want to tell the council is this was a very conservative estimate. And when I say conservative, it tends to be at the higher end. There was no editing done at this point, as we were seeking council direction. We assumed complete coverage, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to stick access points everywhere. There's a good chance, if we take a closer look, that we could drive down the number of access points, which would reduce the cost. Which segues into my concluding comments. We are really seeking direction on next steps. One possible option would be to direct staff to work with a consultant to prepare a citywide Wi-Fi master plan. We would clearly define the objectives and really prioritize locations. And we could also consider locations, while this report really looked at just park locations and facilities, we could look at other locations in the city where it would make sense to put Wi-Fi. Ultimately, what we would want to do is determine what we want, where we want it, and ultimately, what would we do with it. Depending on what we do, there's certainly potential to leverage the network beyond public use. Could be potentially a lot of uses for city field operations, including police, fire, public works, GWP, community development, public works, et cetera, et cetera, and of course, parks and recreation. Part of doing such a study, it really, as I mentioned in the previous slide, would really refine the number of access points in the location. And we would really determine where we really need them, and does it make sense to do so. Doing such a study would be designed to meet really current and future needs. And it's really the first step. Given the amount of investment we're talking about, we need to make sure we get the proper solution that meets our needs and is cost-effective. With that, that concludes my comments. Be happy to answer any questions. I do have my staff on the line as well. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Okay, is there any question from Mr. Bradford? Any question? Everybody's, Ms. Devine?
I don't know if you wanted to do this. Thank you, Mayor, before we get phone calls. But, Mr. Bradford, Jason, we don't, what you're saying is we don't need to do all 40 parks at the beginning. We can do the larger parks and then work towards more parks. And then with the city master plan, then we can really take the big step.
That is correct. That is certainly up to the council direction to direct us on what sites you'd be interested in prioritizing. They certainly do not need to be done all at once. This is not necessarily an all or none approach. It can certainly be phased in based on the direction we receive from the council.
Okay. And my other question has to do with the park at the Americana. Do they have Wi-Fi there? If we, and why wasn't it mentioned on this list?
I do not know. And I don't know if my staff can comment on that. We did not include the park at Americana because I do not believe we maintain that.
Yeah, we don't operate that or maintain it. It's pursuant to a covenant and an agreement. So...
I'm being told that they do have Wi-Fi. They provide Wi-Fi at the Americana.
Correct. They do provide Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one call, I guess.
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Grant Michaels, you're live. Grant, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I would first like to thank the members of the city staff for speaking with me on this issue, and those on council who accepted my invitation to speak with me as well. I do support the goals of expanding internet access throughout the city. Current circumstances have demonstrated that the discrepancy in access does pose problems, as we have seen for children who are trying to do schoolwork, seniors who are trying to have access to register for the vaccine, which is currently internet-only, and with facilities such as the libraries not able to assist those members of the public. Having internet access in additional city areas would be a great benefit for the public. The staff report that was just presented is, does address many of the concerns that I raised and presents a nuanced approach, which was not present in the original staff report, which I discussed with staff. So, I do appreciate staff updating their presentation tonight. With many of the concerns as far as a systematic, phased-in, priority-based approach, looking at which facilities would best serve the needs of park services, primarily those that have the after-school or student tutoring programs that would require strong and robust internet access. The phasing in of the wireless access point, that is something that I'd like to encourage a discussion of, to set a priority of what areas of parks should have Wi-Fi, and put a priority on areas around picnic structures or areas that are closer to the facilities, as opposed to covering the entire park and all of those spaces, including parking lots, which is what the original proposal to answer the question, can it be done, addresses. So, a prioritization of that would be appropriate. My encouragement is that this staff report starts a discussion in which the city does address a priority-based, phased-in approach to reach the goals of expanding wireless access and internet access for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other caller?
No, Mayor, that's the only caller.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian, councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I, you know, the city looked at this several years back. Ultimately, we decided not to go. We weren't focusing it around the park areas, though I think we were talking about a citywide. Jason, we're talking about mainly park facilities at this point? Is that...
That is correct. That was councilmember Najarian, members of the council. That is correct. We were really focused on park locations and the related facilities. It was basically in the portfolio that the Parks and Recreation Department manages. But the architecture would lend itself to really considering other locations, should that be council's desire, to really look at what might make sense to put Wi-Fi in other city locations.
Okay. Is there a lack of cellphone coverage in those parks?
It's, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Given our geography, we have had challenges with LTE cell coverage. It really depends on the area.
So, if I wanted to go to the park, lay down in Verdugo Park and play video games or stream a movie, I would need to have this Wi-Fi system?
Depending on, if you did not have LTE coverage on your device, you would need to connect it to something. That is correct.
So, to me, there's a sort of inconsistency there. There's a disconnect. The example of facilities where children are learning, children are doing homework, fine. But, you know, to supply Wi-Fi so we can play Fortnite, you know, in the middle of a beautiful park just doesn't work for me. I think, I think we're looking at the wrong locations for this. You know, I would rather have Wi-Fi in the dense urban areas of the city than in our parks, so people can actually use it. Who, you know, seniors that are, you know, a senior's not going to, you know, I think it'll be much more useful in those areas, urban residential areas than in the parks. It doesn't really make sense for me that we're putting this in parks. I mean, the park, the idea of a park is to be one with nature, to enjoy the fresh air, to run around. But wait a minute, now we're inviting kids to play Mortal Kombat and to watch that movie that they missed the day before. It doesn't make sense to me to have them in those locations. The idea of expanding the network for free Wi-Fi for our residents and students, great. I'm all for that. But not so much in the parks. It doesn't make sense to me there. I don't know if anyone appreciates that, that little dichotomy, that disconnect. But to me, I have a problem with that in the parks themselves. Except for a very, I mean, except for a very limited focused location where there may be, you know, some need for additional communication, but not, you know, not in the middle of Glen Oaks Park. You know, let's go play Fortnite in Glen Oaks Park. That makes no sense to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
Sure. Thank you. I would say that my, well, my reason for asking for this is because of, we've seen, you know, it was already stated, I think Grant Michaels also mentioned some of the needs with a growing reliance on the internet for more and more of our communication. And as we're seeing technology develop with a greater reliance on this, I truly believe that we need to look at access to the internet as a basic utility and a right for every resident to have to be able to communicate. I'm not saying about high-speed internet, not necessarily streaming movies or playing. I'm actually very impressed by councilmember Najarian referencing Fortnite. I think Roblox is now the new big game for kids. But, you know, this isn't for gaming purposes. It's really for giving our residents most basic access they need. For that reason, my desire would be to have any type of program rolled out to the densest parts of the city, to where residents may be, you know, there's more challenges socio-economically to them. I somewhat I somewhat agree that the parks are not necessarily the ideal place I would like to see rolled out, just because of the antithesis. I mean, I can tell you that I don't feel as though many residents are going to the parks and the one thing that's lacking as an amenity there is access to Wi-Fi. However, we do have facilities at the parks, like clubhouses and community rooms, where we should have good Wi-Fi connections that we currently don't. That's not the same as next to the children's playgrounds or the tennis courts or elsewhere there being a high-speed Wi-Fi or Wi-Fi connection. So I do think that we need to look at whatever approach we take, whether it's a public-private partnership, whether it's piggybacking on the fiber optics that have been already laid by some of the private companies or using our own, we should look into ultimately, and would have been, you know, I think it's important to note that since the last time the council looked at this, Councilmember Najarian, that, you know, technology is growing and continuing to change and many things are becoming more affordable and efficient and I think it's, it makes sense for us to be able to have this. So we avoid like the image that we all saw at the start of the pandemic of two children sitting outside of a fast food restaurant, using their Wi-Fi to do homework. I think that, that is where I'm coming from. I would like us to explore ways where we can provide a modicum of Wi-Fi connectivity to our residents. As more and more people are accessing news, it's interesting that the state rules and laws mandate that we still have hard copy notices of meetings posted and published in print newspapers, when I would venture to guess that I don't have a scientifically conducted, accurate poll to point to, but if I were to guess, I would say that most people are accessing information from the web, from the internet, including us being able to communicate now. So technology is changing. I think it's important for us to keep up with that change, with things that we are looking at today is just doing the basic, meeting the basic needs of many of our residents who may not be, who are living dollar to dollar day to day and may not be able to afford some of the high-priced internet packages. So that's where I would come from. I would like to see it in the neighborhoods. I'd like to see it in some of the densest parts of the city. And in terms of parks, I don't know if that necessarily satisfies it, although I understand the spirit of it. I do think locations in certain parks would be appropriate, but not necessarily just to cover the entire park to say we have it. It may raise a number of other issues that we may not anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Or Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Mr. Kasakian, but I want to let my colleagues know that I was approached about Wi-Fi in the parks by a senior citizen, not a child or a school, a school-aged kid. You know, and our seniors need this, this access, just as Mr. Kasakian said, some of them don't have it in their homes, they can't afford it, and so this might be a way of enabling them to use Wi-Fi. I think that, again, I also believe that we could start with the parks that have community buildings and where programs are held, the Civic Auditorium, Pacific Park, what, you know, you would know all of those parks by name. Start there, but I, and then I think we should absolutely move towards a city network, a master plan. Let's get into this next century and of Wi-Fi and enable all of our residents to be able to access information when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have one more caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I missed the presentation, I'm sorry, but then I noticed it's about cell towers. If it is about the cell towers, I'm very concerned. Glendale is buried. We live in a globe covered of cell towers. If this involves more cell towers, which are harmful, as we know from years ago, used to be strict restrictions, the city must provide total of the cell towers or the entire net for the residents. I'd like to know it. Thank you. Bye.
Ms. Valentine, what you were watching more interesting than this? That's what I'm wondering. Okay. Mr. Bradford, don't we have areas of city of Glendale that it's very hard to have access to internet?
If you're referring to LTE cellphone coverage, that's probably true. There are, it's, again, depending on your carrier of choice, there are varying degrees of coverage. So yes, there are some, what we would consider dead spots within the cities, particularly given our terrain.
Okay. Now, is this gonna help that? Is not gonna, the parks are not gonna help those black spots?
It would not directly, but it would, wherever we would wind up putting Wi-Fi locations, they would have an ability to get access to the internet where they otherwise couldn't, but it wouldn't directly increase cell coverage, if that's your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. So if we move the cell towers that you are providing, you will asking to provide in the parks, we move it to some other areas, is that gonna help us to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think, just a point of clarification, these are not cell towers. These are.
Locations.
So.
The equipment which we are putting in the parks.
Sure. If somebody did not have good LTE coverage, as we deploy Wi-Fi throughout the city, that would give them another way to connect to the internet.
Okay. So if we would put somewhere other than parks, isn't that will help the LTE for those who are having problem or kids at home trying to go through internet and learn their lessons or whatever they are following?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for example, if they do not have good coverage in their home and we put this Wi-Fi, say, in maybe somewhere in the downtown area, for example, then yes, they could, they could use that Wi-Fi and that would allow them to connect to the internet, whereas they may not otherwise be able to, maybe in their residence, for example.
Is that gonna be more beneficial than putting them, all of them concentrated on, in 40 parks?
It depends on the, ultimately, if we studied about where exactly we would want to put them and really goes back to prioritizing where it would make the most sense to put them. If we put them in, say, in the downtown areas and certain park facilities, certainly. And I think really the point I was trying to make is there needs to be a closer look at this, so we can prioritize where it makes the most sense to put them.
That's what I was going to say, to study and see where is the best place to locate these items. So this way, everybody can use it rather than the park to be, to go to park to read something or follow something or whatever purpose we are trying to put these towers in or wires in. I want to go to page seven, which I asked before, that 4G LTE. What will happen if later, I remember because there is a complaint, they don't want to see 5G. So what we're gonna, we're gonna spend the money, it will be the same for, if we turn to 5G?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a different technology. It's not cellular technology. That reference on page seven in the report was just really providing an example of the coverage, or I'm sorry, service, that somebody would expect when they connect a device to the network that we would extend. Typically, on a 4G LTE device, you have access to streaming of content, email, general internet surfing, that's the level of service. It was just really for comparison purposes, but this really doesn't have, this is different technology and is not cellphone-related and certainly not 5G-related. That's left to the telecom providers, Verizon, T-Mobile, ATT, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other, yes, Councilmember Bradford?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jason, first of all, for this report. I'm in favor of moving forward with a plan. I think we're, most of us, I think, are basically coming from the same place, which is that we feel that, or at least I'll speak for myself, but I think I heard, I heard the same sentiments, is what we really need to be focused on here is the community that can't necessarily afford the $70 a month or more that it costs to have high-speed broadband at home. And that high-speed broadband is a utility, it's, clearly it's necessary and if you don't have access to it, you're, you know, you're on the wrong side of the economic divide and you're gonna fall further behind. So I think our focus really is not on people that want to lie out in Verdugo Park, as Councilmember Najarian said, and I agree, it's, really should be people that need access to do basic things like looking for a job, doing homework, finding services and for seniors and for kids and for new immigrants and people like that. So that, I think that should be our starting point, that's our goal. And if that's the goal, you know, if money were no object, we would run fiber to every house and we would, we would offer a great, you know, a great service, Glendale Water and Power, who was saying, Glendale Water and Power and internet, right? We would, we would offer our own internet service, but I don't think that that is really viable economically. So we should probably be looking at places like community centers, you know, if we have it in our libraries already, that's great, and it'll be opening up again, you know, hopefully pretty soon for regular use. But, you know, other community centers, other locations where we think people are gonna congregate and be able to sit comfortably and do work. It could be near a sports facility. I can picture, you know, Artie taking his son for a tennis lesson and sitting down on the benches right next to the tennis courts in Gloria at a park and pulling out a laptop and doing some work. And pulling out the laptop, I want to come back to that point in a second. But I think that, you know, that's really where we should focus and maybe we can have a plan which just does a, you know, highest bang for the buck approach. We look at the lowest cost because we already have, you know, fiber to that location or we can run a lateral where it's in the GWP plan to add fiber and biggest impact, meaning it's touching on the communities that we want to be able to service. And it's in locations where people are gonna use it for the kinds of functions that we think they need to use it for. So I would like us to move forward like that. I did mention the laptop because I have a question there and I don't know what the answer is, but it's also about the device, right? And people that can't afford the internet service may not be able to afford the device. So I think, you know, in certain community centers, we can, and libraries, you know, we can make that, those devices available. I think we probably already do, but I think that's where we should focus. And the question that I have as you go, as you come back to us with a plan and if my colleagues agree that, you know, you should do that, I'd like to look at, you know, two other things. One is the security elements, obviously, we want to make sure people aren't piggybacking on this, who live near an access point and canceling their own service when they can fully afford, you know, to get their own service. So we want to make sure that we aren't getting those free riders and obviously, we want to make sure that people aren't using this to take advantage of the vulnerable by doing, you know, you know, man in the middle attacks and all these other things that people do to steal identity. And, and we also want to avoid people doing illegal things like downloading torrents, right? So I know that those are all things that you would be looking into, obviously. And just the last one I want to make is, now I just drew a blank, oh, I know what it is. Yeah, when you come back, also, if you could think about and tell us about how this fits into a bigger plan for the kind of internet infrastructure we need for Glendale to start rolling out some smart cities applications. This would be for ourselves, for, and some of this comes from my conversation with Grant Michaels, I want to give him credit for that. So, you know, police and fire and other applications that we would be rolling out in the city as a municipal, you know, part of our municipal services. How do we make sure that the plan kind of complements what we might want to do in that regard? So those are my comments on this.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bradford?
I was just going to comment very quickly on Councilmember Bronn's comments, you're correct, we do have some, you know, some security would, elements would be in place to safeguard against the items you mentioned, particularly those, there would be some content filtering in, so blocking, as you mentioned, the torrent sites for sharing of copyrighted material, adult content, et cetera, et cetera. And as far as people canceling their own service and jumping on this, there are some deterrents as far as making them sign in or go to a splash page every so often. It's basically what's referred to as a timeout. Depending on the area of where we stick Wi-Fi, we can always turn it off at a certain point in the evening, 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, whatever the case may be. So there are some definite ways to mitigate that. We can't totally block it if they're, happen to be in close proximity to an access point, but there are certainly controls that we can put in place to mitigate, mitigate those concerns.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
I have a question for staff. Is there any way right now, based on usage from third parties, to know where the areas are where the population in Glendale has the least access to the internet? Not blackout sites per se, but places where people either don't have it because of whatever the reason. I'm assuming, you know, that should be, we should be able to get that information somehow, no?
Or they have it and they are having problem, it's not powerful enough to connect.
Councilmember Kasakian, members of the council, I do not have that information at my fingertips. I would have to do a little digging to see if that information is available.
If I may, Jason, actually, a Public Works Department does have that information. Every time a private service provider applies for a permit to install a new facility at a location, they will have to show proof of what they call the dark spots, where there is either lack of or weak signals, and that's where they plan to place them. So we do have that information.
So based on that information, I'm looking at the alternatives that we need to look at. And I think like that ultimately, a lot of us feel that there is a need for this. I think many of us do. I don't know if the mayor has specifically weighed in, but I can say for myself and a few of my colleagues that, you know, perhaps a hybrid. I'm not against having it at the parks, but if it's a park with a community center structure of building on there, I definitely would start from those, but I don't think that, you know, just targeting all our parks is necessarily the best approach. So I would like to see a revised list of those that we think are essential, that are also blackout spots where it would make sense. I can think of a few. I know that, I think in Glen Oaks Park, there is a community room and I don't know if that has internet access, perhaps the Casa Adobe, whatever. And then in addition to that, to target those areas where we have those zones of low internet access and usage, as Mr. Galanian mentioned, Public Works can help us identify. And to bring back to council, a picture, a map of, a map and a big 50,000-foot picture of where we need to be putting our resources and also what it would take in terms of resources and then at that point, if we need to pursue or put out a RFP for a wireless master plan with a consultant to do that. So I don't know, that wasn't the most eloquently worded motion, but that would be my motion if we can transfer that into some sort of.
I guess in conclusion, we want this to be revised and to put where the low internet access is, as I was trying to say before. and to put where the low Internet access is, as I was trying to say before. So that would be better than to put everything in parks. Apparently, everybody is agreeing to it. So maybe we send back for further review and bring it back again? Okay, Mr. Golanyan says yes, and apparently, Ms. Devine?
I thought that we, one of our options was to okay the, if we were interested in a citywide master plan. That way, those locations could be identified and we could move forward and perhaps be ready by the time the budget comes to address how much we want to spend on wireless, on Wi-Fi in our city and go from there.
So this goes back for further review, Mr. Golanyan Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I may make a suggestion based on the feedback we've received from the council tonight. We do have a consultant we have worked with who just has recently concluded the fiber plan for GWP. They have extensive experience in preparing master plans for cities throughout the country. What I would propose is to return to council very, very quickly with a scope of work, taking into account all of the feedback council has provided this evening with the focus on the denser urban areas, community buildings in park locations, and also areas with low access or no access to the Internet. I could return with a report for council consideration in the very near future.
Thank you.
I would move that.
Can we add one criteria to that?
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
And it's listed, it's listed in the alternative, actually, but those sites that have the greatest proximity to the existing fiber backbone, that's the low-hanging fruit, I think, where we'll get the greatest. Everything that was said, plus an analysis of the hubs where the connections could be made most easily. So we can analyze the very best sites for the dollar.
Okay.
Could I clarify?
Mr. Bratman?
Yeah. What, I just want to clarify the point of places where there is limited access. I, my interest is in where there's limited access for economic reasons, not physical reasons. I mean, if you can afford to get cable wireless, I think, cable wireless, cable broadband, maybe I'm wrong, but I think you can get it. So my interest would be more, let's focus on places where we have issues with economic access. And that would be, you know, our dense urban areas. So what Jason said about that, I think, is makes sense, dense urban areas. But I mean, we're not trying to fill gaps in cellular coverage because this is not, we're not talking about cellular, you know? And there are places in the hills and stuff that have lousy cellular access, and there are ways to solve that. You have to talk to your cellular carrier and there are ways, there are technologies, there are ways to solve that. That, I don't think we should be getting in the business of fixing the problem for people that live in the hillsides that have bad cellular coverage. I just want to make that clear. And I see some of my colleagues' heads nodding, so I'm hoping, I think we're on the same page, actually. All of us are saying the same thing.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah. So I moved, if you have Jason's suggestion, I would move that, that we get, use the consultant that we have on board to come up with a plan which would focus on our parks, our high-density areas, our areas of economic injustice, and go from there.
Can I just, Councilmember Devine, I just want to be clear. We say parks, specific parks, correct, not all parks?
Yeah, not all parks. No, 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 just the parks that have access points, I guess it is, or have a large--
Community rooms, gathering--
All right, as long as that is the direction we're going in, I will support that. I'll second that. I just don't want us to chase every single park and spend a lot of money for no point.
No, no, I agree with that.
All right, I guess, is it clear, everything?
Yeah, I think so. And again, as Mr. Bratman noted, he's going to bring back a report that will highlight, put all that in, so you'll have another chance to see exactly what's going to go into that master plan before we hire that consultant.
So do we have, do we have road calls?
Well, a motion from Councilmember Devine, I don't know if there was a second.
Yes, there is a second by Mr. Kusakian. Road call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajani?
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be 8B Community Development Regarding Pedestrian Safety Plan and Associated Environmental Review. One, resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration for Glendale Citywide Pedestrian Plan. Two, resolution adopting the Glendale Citywide Pedestrian Plan. Three, motion directing staff on implementation process on the citywide pedestrian plan.
Mr. City Manager Golanyan?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Agajani, members of city council, this is a long-awaited and highly anticipated item that staff's bringing forward. You saw a preview of this item at the recent mobility study session. And believe it or not, this has been in the works since 2015, when city council then authorized the hiring of a consultant to help initiate this process. And since then, different city councils have received a couple of updates on the program and the plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, to make the presentation on this item. Thank you.
Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As highlighted by Mr. Golanyan, this is a plan that has been in the works for several years now. It's one that we are very excited to bring forth to the council and hopefully move forward with adoption. Can you see the slides right now? Great. So what we'd like to do tonight is provide an overview, really on the background and the public engagement process and how this plan came into shape. We'd like to touch on some of the overviews of incidents and histories in the city that really demonstrates the need for this plan. Provide a very brief overview of some of the strategies that are in the plan. If you recall, we have had a couple of study sessions, so we don't want to go into too great a detail or depth on these, but we do want to provide some information on kind of phasing of what we look for in terms of the short term, the medium term, and the long term. And then ultimately, we are seeking council's approval to certify the mitigated negative declaration, as well as the formal adoption of the citywide pedestrian plan. So the plan is made up of two parts. The first is taking stock, and that's really looking at our existing conditions. What are our existing assets, where are our existing trouble spots, where could we look for improvements to improve pedestrian safety, but also pedestrian comfort and the aesthetic quality of the environment? Really to encourage people to walk, not only does it need to be safe, but it also needs to be attractive. So part two really tackles those kind of elements. Excuse me, looking at the potential strategies to improve the pedestrian environment. And there's a number of different steps that are proposed. It includes education alternatives, includes physical improvements that could be made, a number of different strategies that really seek to improve the overall quality of the pedestrian environment. The plan itself was highly informed by a safety advisory committee that was assembled. The goal here really was to review and provide guidance on the strategies that would be proposed as part of the implementation, to really encourage creating a safe pedestrian environment and to really improve the overall quality, including the experience as well. So as part of the process, we went through a number of public engagement opportunities. One of the most valuable ones that we were engaged in was really asking the public, what would encourage them to walk more? What we heard from number one, really, was vehicles would slow down. That was one of the most important concerns. You can see that, the graphic there on the left, the chart, really highlighting the concern around speed and the safety that that poses. In fact, number two and number three are also related, looking at traffic enforcement, but then also making crosswalks more visible to improve safety. There were also comments on improving opportunities for places to walk to. These are some strategies that we tackle through many of our different community plans, such as the Tropical Center Plan, Downtown Specific Plan, really trying to create a dense, mixed-use, walkable environment. And then you can see, as you kind of move down the list, there are other comments, and they're improving lighting in the evening, sidewalks being in better condition, just more people in general walking. The idea that if there are more people there, it's more enticing and more encouraging for other users as well. What you see on the right is kind of a visual representation of that. There was essentially an art installation, if you will, to represent where these comments kind of fell into, what category, based on the responses from the general public. And speed is really the important point here. It's one of the backbones of nearly every strategy that is proposed as part of the plan, is really the reduction of speed and the protection from speed. And I put this slide in here really to illustrate the threat that speed does pose to safety for pedestrians. If pedestrians hit by an automobile going 20 miles an hour, nine out of 10 pedestrians are going to survive that accident. As that speed limit increases, that risk of death is not, is not a direct relationship. As you move up to 30 miles an hour, now only five out of 10 pedestrians will survive, and that's an increase of only 10 miles an hour. Moving that speed limit up to 40, now only one out of every 10 pedestrians is likely to survive. And this is a really important point to make because, again, the strategies that are proposed here are really aimed at trying to reduce that speed and improve that overall safety. And it really stems from the idea, and this is a quote from Anthony Fox, he's the former Secretary of Transportation, U.S. Secretary of Transportation, and he'd say that whether you live in a city or a small town, and whether you drive a car, take a bus, or ride a train, at some point in the day, everyone is a pedestrian. And again, this is another one of those principal points that our pedestrian plan is built around. For us to encourage people to walk more and to choose alternative modes of transportation, even if they want to bicycle, take a train, take a bus, odds are they are going to have to be a pedestrian at some point, and we need to start with that pedestrian and make sure that that environment is safe for them to ensure that they will use an alternative mode of transportation or even follow a Park Once philosophy, where maybe they visit one of our shopping districts or one of our urban centers and encourage them to park one time and then conduct most of the rest of their trips via foot. So it's really about trying to improve that overall quality and focusing and starting with that pedestrian. And that's done through a series of goals in this plan. Goal number one overall was to make walking safer. Number two was the idea of creating connected and complete communities so that we didn't have discrete and disjointed and disconnected routes, but that these routes would actually take pedestrians where they wanted to go and where they needed to be. Goal number three is really focusing on building walkable places for all. As we look at some of the pedestrian collision data in the city of Glendale, we see that our most vulnerable population are those that are at the highest risk. So making sure that the pedestrian environment that we create is not only for those that are able-bodied, but those who may experience some sort of mobility challenge, and ensuring that they can use the environment safely as well. And then goal number four is really that organization for implementation, making sure that we have a plan that we can execute, one that we can move forward with, one that is logical, makes sense for the city, and is achievable as well. These are some of the high-collision corridors that are highlighted in Part One of the pedestrian plan. This is really looking at where our high-risk corridors are. And as you can see, a majority of those are located in South Glendale, several of them in downtown or in downtown-adjacent neighborhoods. And these represent some of the highest collision rates in the city. You can see that's illustrated by the red dots that shows the density of collisions on those streets and at those intersections. One of the things we were asked to do was to also look at the time of day, which I'll present here shortly. But it's important to note that out of those streets, and I believe there's about 14 or 17 that are there, they only represent 2% of the roadway network in all of Glendale, but they account for 40% of the pedestrian collisions. So many of the strategies that we see there to improve the pedestrian environment are really focused on those corridors, on the challenges within those corridors as well. If we look at our collision history, this is a good example as to why we should move forward with this plan. We saw a kind of a slow uptick in pedestrian collisions from 2003 all the way up to 2015 where we saw our peak. We saw that number come down in 2016, 2017, and 2018. It is reasonable for us to believe that our safety education campaign may have played a role in helping with that, but we did see those numbers increase substantially in 2019. In fact, it represents our third worst year since 2003. Overall, just today, new data was released nationwide that also has shown that the first half of 2020 saw a significant increase in pedestrian collisions. If it continues at that same rate, it'll be the largest year-over-year increase in United States history. That's something that we'll want to take a look at and see if that also rings true for Glendale. But this trend really illustrates the need to be able to put in this pedestrian plan and improve that overall safety. If we look at incident history based on age, we can see again, our most vulnerable population is really the ones that are at risk. We can look between 60 and 79, essentially some of the highest rates of collisions, 10 to 14, 15 and 19, again, really representing the need to improve that multimodal transportation, that pedestrian environment for all users, particularly those that may be mobility challenged.
Bradley, can I interrupt? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Going back to Slide 11. On this collision history, is it possible to overlay or also have the number of citations or the enforcement aspect of it to see if there's a correlation? I understand that you give, you want to take some credit for the education. I certainly think that will probably correlates to those years when there's drops. But would it be possible to know how many tickets were issued that year? To see if there's any correlation there as well?
That's something that we could look into and dig a little bit deeper to see what the root cause was for that decline and see if there is some relationship there.
Okay, thank you.
So if we look at the rate of incidents by time of day, and this is just for 2019 data that we were able to pull, what we see is that those rates of incidents are much higher during peak daytime hours, really between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., really 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., representing kind of our worst period of time. This is when incidents are most frequent to happen. In fact, between 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., there are approximately the same number of incidents in 2019 as there were just between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. This is a really important point to make as well because it shows the need to make some of these infrastructure improvement changes, some of these changes in terms of education safety to encourage good motorist behavior, good pedestrian behavior, good cyclist behavior, really, from all modes. And that this isn't necessarily an issue of just poor lighting or poor drivers because of evening hours. This is really about the number of pedestrians that are out and really needing to reduce speed and improve overall conditions for pedestrians. When we adjust that seasonally to represent daylight versus non-daylight hours, 70% of all incidents occurred during daylight hours in 2019. Again, reinforcing the need for things like curb bulbouts, for those kind of physical improvements to really slow down motorists. So from all of that work, essentially, the plan identifies a number of high-priority areas. You can see those highlighted on the map on the left in dark blue. Again, a majority of these are located in South Glendale. We do have a few pockets in North Glendale, as well as Glen Oaks as you move towards West Glendale. And really, how these were developed was through a weighted scoring system. The first was demand, representing the number of pedestrians that may be using that area. How much do we need to improve this, based on how many people are using the pedestrian environment? A focus on equity being a number element, another element there to weight in that scoring. And then just overall safety, where are these incidents occurring? And really showing us where are these high-collision corridors, where are priority and focus areas to make these improvements? And really, the plan proposes a number of tools, and this graphic that was put together by the consulting team really demonstrates, in just one intersection, the number of different tools that we have to try to improve that environment. That can be anything as simple as default walk phases and improved signal timing, no rights on reds, very simple strategies that don't require physical improvements, but they can also include things like high-visibility crosswalks. That would be another near-term improvement that are relatively easy to put in place. Kind of longer-term projects can include things like curb extensions, where we tighten the curb rate AI, lane reconfigurations, refuge areas in the middle of wider streets, those things that require physical changes. So it's really kind of all-encompassing. The plan proposes a number of different elements depending on what's needed and what's being proposed at each intersection to improve safety. It's really responsive to a number of elements. Again, going back to demand, safety, equity, but also just what those current physical conditions are and what they justify and warrant. When we look at things like curb extensions, that does not mean that every single intersection in the city is necessarily eligible, for one. It's really about looking at where we need to have them, for the most part. So the implementation--
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Bratman?
Yeah, hi Bradley. So, you know, you talk about all these physical improvements, and I, you know, agree with everything you're saying. One interesting thing I've read that there are studies that show that planting street trees densely along roadways also kind of creates a sense of narrowness and-- and will cause drivers to naturally slow down. And I don't see that mentioned here. Maybe I missed it, but I would I would encourage us to also look at that because trees then provide so many other benefits, but if they can also be part of our making of the city more, well, slowing traffic, and obviously, they make walking more pleasant, right? Because you're protected from the heat, the air is better, and all those things. So I might have missed it, but I just wanted to get it out there that I think that could be a big part of the program as well.
So it's not included in this graphic, but the plan does call for improvements to things like lighting, street trees, vegetation, signage, wayfinding. A number of those, in many ways, they can be considered aesthetic improvements that would improve the overall quality for a pedestrian. But to the point that you made, they do also create a safety improvement as well. Essentially, the more visual obstructions that are present, the more visual elements that are that are present, it creates a narrower field of view for a motorist and does encourage slowing down. The plan does propose that, especially in some of the South Glendale streets where we see an absence of street trees in many of them. It's not represented here, but we do have that in the plan.
Great, thanks.
So the implementation really looks at it from from three phases, if you will. A short-term action, which is something that can happen tomorrow to within the next five years. Medium-term action, which is really kind of a six-to-10-year frame, and then long-term, which is 11 years or more. The short-term actions, those are things such as improving signal timing or making adjustments to default walk phases, things of that nature. There's also proposals in there to remove the pedestrian buttons as well and just have default walk phases. High-visibility crosswalks, another feature that can easily be implemented. There are pilot projects and pilot programs that we can pursue. These are things that we had also talked about with council last summer that can replicate the physical improvements that we would make at a later date. This that's a really good opportunity because it gives us a chance to go and take a look at what those improvements, what kind of impact that they would actually have. It would allow us to assess, measure, and adjust accordingly. You know, a goal here is not to allow the plan just to become stale, but to be able to be responsive as we look at things like these pilot programs, which do replicate ultimately in what you see in that kind of that five-to-10-year range, really the short term through the medium term, is the implementation of those pilot programs into permanent implementation. And really, that kind of 10-year phase, looking at a full build-out of many of these these items. There's also the first-to-mile transit access projects that would try to really focus on trying to improve connectivity between downtown Glendale, our transit center. We have other studies that are also in place, such as Metro's BRT. We have our own streetcar study, which will be returning to council in the near term as well. Those are all accounted for and really looked at as a suite of tools in addition to the pedestrian plan. And the plan is really there to respond to these other multimodal transportation options that exist. So again, just some examples of some short-term projects. Again, default walk phases, improving signal timing crosswalks. Those can be our standard zebra crosswalks, you can see on the right. They can be something a little more creative that we see on the left, something that really creates that visual cue to motorists and encourages them to slow down. So the short through midterm, we're looking at pilot projects that can come by way of curb extensions. It doesn't have to be a curb extension right away. There's a number of different kind of tactical urbanism strategies that can take place to replicate that before going into a permanent project. But also, education programs and safe routes to school, those are all part of that short and midterm as well. Continuing that education element, continuing to encourage and build that confidence and safety amongst our residents, amongst students, amongst those who work in Glendale, to walk in the city. And then, again, some of those other midterm projects, looking at overall corridor improvements. There could be lane configurations, that could be taking out a turnpocket, that could be additional curb bulbouts, narrowing of lanes to include wider sidewalks or bicycle lanes, but really looking in this phase to a permanent, moving towards permanent implementation from those pilot projects. So when asked of the public as part of our public engagements, I agree with the the goals here and the vision of the pedestrian plan. 89% of respondents fell in between the mostly or the definitely categories. So this was something that was very well received by the public. It was very well informed by the public to begin with, but we did get very strong support afterwards for the recommendations that were being made as part of this plan. Just to touch on this briefly, Vision Zero is a guiding philosophy of part or of this pedestrian plan. If the council did want to move forward with an official Vision Zero policy, that is something that we would need to bring back independently. There are things like developing criteria and metrics for improvement. We would need to establish a timeline and a timeframe to be able to achieve that, to eliminate traffic fatalities. Those are all kind of key components. So that's something that we would need to come back at a later date and pursue independently of the adoption of the plan. So the recommended actions this evening, a resolution to certify the mitigated negative declaration, and then a motion to adopt Glendale's first citywide pedestrian plan. Before I turn this over for any questions or comments, I also just want to take a minute to thank Fred Zorivan, the mobility staff. This, again, has been years of labor and work and love to improve the pedestrian environment for the city of Glendale. And from there, I'd just like to turn it over and ask if or respond to any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Okay, is there any question? Do we have any caller?
Mayor, we have three callers.
So let's go to the callers first.
Mike Mohill, you're live. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, council members.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mohill.
Hi, council members. Good evening.
Good evening.
We should not implement road diet on major commercial streets of Glendale like Colorado and Brand Boulevard. Central Avenue. I'm sorry, interruption. Central and Glendale Avenue and other major streets of the city. Road diet and traffic calming measures would be most welcome in many residential neighborhoods. Many of our major commercial streets have a level of service from D through F. A road rated F means this road is the worst. Fire trucks would find it most difficult to maneuver if we have road diets on our major commercial thoroughfares. Residential neighborhoods. In northwest Glendale, around Hoover High School, many residents are complaining about speeders and traffic. The same problems apply to the Rossmoyn neighborhood, where Glendale College and Glendale Civic Auditorium are located. The narrowing of East Glen Oaks Boulevard and Glen Oaks Canyon would be feasible and would create a more traffic calming environment. Tonight's report, if implemented, will probably be forcing people to take buses and bikes. Yet because of the coronavirus pandemic, many residents are refusing to take public transportation. Also, many buses are empty due to the pandemic. Is this agenda coming from Councilman Dan Brotman and State Assemblywoman Laura Freeman? Where they want to force people to take buses and ride bikes to work, rain or shine? We know for a fact 80% of Glendale workforce work outside of the city of Glendale. Council members, do we expect Glendale, do you expect Glendale residents to start taking their bikes to travel to downtown? I haven't seen the proponents of buses and bikes traveling from home to work. The more council approves hotels, the more you are creating a traffic nightmare in downtown neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next caller, please.
Jane Patel, you're live. Jane, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jane Patel. And I wanted to make a statement regarding the pedestrian plan. A study published at Science Direct Journal has shown walkability is linked to less crime and better health among residents. Researchers at the University of Kansas found that older adults living in easy-to-walk communities not only had better physical health, but also higher cognitive function. And researchers at the University of Chicago found that walkable neighborhoods are associated with more arts organizations and higher levels of civic engagement. According to our own glendaleca.gov website, the Glendale Police Department has investigated 574 fatal injury, fatal and injury collisions involving pedestrians and bicyclists in the past three years. Glendale has a chronic safety issue on our streets, and pedestrian, the pedestrian plan does a good job of prioritizing these problem corridors. I hope that council can allocate the funding necessary to implement these improvements. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mauro Yakubian, you're live. Mauro, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Mauro Yakubian. I am a commissioner serving on the Transportation and Parking Commission here for the beautiful state, beautiful city of Glendale. And I'm calling because this pedestrian plan is very close to my heart, something that I have been involved with actively since, well, 2008, when Council Najarian first worked with me to reach out to the Office of Traffic and Safety at UC Berkeley, where Glendale was awarded the first pedestrian safety grant in all the cities of California. So from that point on, it has become an important mission for Glendale to improve upon pedestrian safety. I'm so proud of the progress that Glendale has made. It hasn't been easy. And I'm calling to also, well, number one, to to encourage the city council to keep the pedestrian safety plan in the forefront of your priorities. And also, I'd like to recognize the countless number of city staff that is working behind the scenes, that are making all of these improvements possible. And throughout my years of working and giving tireless devotion to this very important cause, people such as Rubik Galanian, who I've had the pleasure to work with and see his commitment and passion, Mr. Fred Zoverand, who without his efforts to work for grant money, a lot of these projects wouldn't be able to go through. So I would love the viewing public to know that there's an amazing group of people in the city of Glendale that are working together and united to always be one step ahead of this important issue of pedestrian safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yakubian. Is there any other caller?
David Eisenberg? David, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm a Glendale resident and homeowner since 1985. And I love to walk in Glendale, but it's very dangerous. And I'd like to applaud the city's hard work on crafting the pedestrian plan. It is very extensive and very thorough, and I urge you to act on it as fast and whatever motions you need to put this in place as fast as possible. You know, I'm looking at that graph where you show the collisions, and it's scary. Even, you know, even the good years, there's still 81 collisions in a year. And this this process has gone on for over 10 years, and the plan has been around since, I believe, five or six years. And it's all those people that have been hit. Let's let's work on this and try to get the, you know, I'd love to see the collisions down to zero. That would be, you know, that Vision Zero plan is is really good. So as much as you can work, as fast as you can work, and please vote yes on this measure today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg. Next caller, please.
Alec Bartrosov. Alec, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Alec Bartrosov. He was just served on the Transportation Commission at the time that the plan was being developed, as well as the advisory committee for the plan. And I also want to commend staff and the consultants that were hired. They did a very good job with doing outreach, conducting walk audits. It was a very engaged process, and I think we got a lot of information from the community as we developed the plan. I know that you're going to pass the plan. It's not going to be an issue. My main hope today is that council will be able to identify funding that will implement the plan. We have lots of plans. There's lots of lofty ideas and great ideas in this plan, but it doesn't mean anything if we don't have the money to implement this plan. So I'm hoping out of today's conversation, we can have some kind of dedicated annual set aside for implementing the plan. There are great projects. They all have a cost estimate associated with it. We know what the cost will be. And it would be great to see from council that we have a dedicated funding stream for this project. I also hope that staff and council deprioritize safety and encouragement campaigns. There is no evidence to suggest that these are a way to reduce collisions. I think the main bang for your buck is physical intervention. And as the things that Bradley mentioned, a lot of those physical interventions are proven to reduce collision. So things like crosswalks, curb extensions, lane reconfigurations, all of these are physical interventions that are proven to make streets safer. And most importantly, reducing speed, which is the number-one concern for residents in Glendale. So thank you for passing the plan. I hope you can dedicate funding for it and move ahead with great speed. No pun intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartrosov. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, that's all right. Is there any question or questions from staff? No. Okay, Mr. Katsakian, Councilmember Katsakian.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and report. Thank you for adding some of the information, bringing back information I requested in terms of times of day. I think it's very telling. It's interesting. It kind of dispels some misconceptions about, you know, collisions happening because of poor visibility or whatever else the case may be, so I appreciate that. I do have a question about, in terms of outreach, when we're doing our outreach for these types of, for community input and getting information out there. You know, one of the comments I received from a group in the community was that not all homeowners groups were approached or other stakeholders. Did you reach out to every single homeowner group? And did you reach out to organizations that represent some of our, the individuals who rent, the renters, tenants' union, whatever groups that we have that represent that demographic that are in some of the more denser, more highly impacted parts of the city? And what was your methodology? How did you approach that outreach?
So the outreach was rather diverse. What I'd like to do is actually ask our principal planner, Fred Zorivan, if he could give us a bit of background in terms of any specific groups that that we engaged in the outreach for. We also have our consultant who can answer that question probably a little bit better as well. So Fred, if you could chime in on that, that would be great. I'm not sure if he's hearing it there. I'd have to look back at the plan, but if I'm not mistaken, we did reach out to a number of different organizations. That's something that's very consistent with the development of our plans to make sure that we are from an equity perspective, but then also making sure that we're reaching out to groups that are representative of those larger organizations that we need to.
Mr. Katsakian, members of city council, we conducted a lot of public outreach in terms of community meetings. We held fun events where we would entertain children, and that would bring families. And then we could actually ask those people, a lot of it took place in South Glendale, where it is more dense. We could ask people that normally wouldn't attend a public event. We held carnival-type things, fun events up near the freeway. The Spooktacular was born out of this effort down at Cerritos Park. So we did a lot of outreach, not necessarily to homeowner groups that that organize in areas in the residential portions, but we invited the community to places where we could get a large cross-section of input. And I think Ms. Wieland has some other to add?
Sure, I'd be glad to chime in. Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Wieland with Nelson Nygaard. I was the project manager on the consultant side, supporting the city in this effort. And what Bradley and Philip have said is exactly right. We certainly didn't hit every single Glendale resident over the course of developing the plan, but we did feel like we had very broad engagement, both from homeowners and from renters. As Philip said, we tried to identify locations where we could connect with people without asking them to do something else. But we also held a good number of press. But we also held a good number of presentations, including to the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. We used our Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee, and you've heard from a couple members of that group tonight, to really bring representation from a lot of the neighborhoods and from a lot of different perspectives and demographics into the planning process throughout. So we felt like we heard a range of perspectives, a good number of voices, and provided people with a lot of ways to access us and for us to access them as well.
Thank you for that. And I, you know, just, uh, I, I'm sure that you, you did your darnedest to reach out to as many folks and as many groups as possible, certainly. It's very difficult to reach out to everyone. But, um, in terms of outreach or anything that we plan to implement moving forward, I do want to ask you to pay particularly close attention and outreach to those neighborhoods, homeowners groups, um, stakeholder groups that are in and around, let's say, for instance, school areas where we've had a number of collisions and fatalities, the college and the neighborhoods adjoining the college where there, there can be, um, issues, uh, with drivers and, and parkers, people who are, um, looking for parking and may not be paying the most closest attention or the, you know, the collision or the clash of, of the neighborhoods with those areas. So, um, do, do please take those things into consideration, especially the areas around schools.
Okay. All right. Is, is there any other questions from staff? Staff?
Mr. Botman has his hand.
Mr. Botman?
Mayor Agarjani? Yeah, um, I had, um, I just have some comments, not, not so much questions, if that's okay, unless you want to go through questions first.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, yeah, first of all, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank Nelson Nygaard and, and all the, the people that participated. Mauro called in, Alec called in, and other people that didn't call in that were part of this. It's a, it's a really a very, very strong plan. And, um, I wish I could take credit, uh, for, for this, as, um, Mr. Mohill said, it's, it's, uh, coming from me. I wish it were, um, but this started in 2015, when being on council wasn't even a, a twinkle in my eye. So, um, I can't take credit for it, but I think it's one of the most important things we're going to be doing, uh, as a city, and it's definitely one of my highest priorities to see this plan not just passed, but, um, uh, get implemented. I think it's, it's just beyond doubt that the public wants safer streets. Um, we all hear that all the time. And, and I think one of the most important slides that Bradley put up is that one that shows the, um, likelihood of surviving a crash at different speeds. And it's clear that safer streets mean slower, uh, volley, slow, slower drivers or slower driving. Sorry, I'm losing my words here. Um, safer streets mean slower streets, and, um, in some cases, that is going to require a trade-off, because if you drive slower, it may take you longer to get where you're going. Um, that's not always going to be the case, but in some cases, slower streets may require trade-offs. And I just want to make sure that we're all on board in understanding and accepting that those trade-offs will have to be made, knowing really where the public wants to be on this. I like that the plan focuses on the engineering, uh, street geometry issue. Um, as, uh, as Alec Bartrosov said when he called in, it's really the physical changes that are going to make the most difference. I think all the, all the literature says that. Things like, like education campaigns are nice, but I don't think there's any evidence that that is going to make a fundamental difference. And I don't think the decline, um, with all due respect to Bradley, I don't think the decline, uh, that we saw in prior years necessarily, uh, has to do with the education campaigns. I mean, there's just no reason to make that assumption, just because the two are correlated, they're not necessarily, um, uh, there's not necessarily a causal relationship between them. So I'm glad we're, that this plan focuses on, on, uh, road design. Um, and I think, um, the other big question is enforcement. I mean, many, many people kind of immediately go to that, the, the issue of enforcement. They say we need more cops out on the streets. I think, um, it would be great, but I don't think physical, um, you know, cops stopping cars type enforcement scales. I mean, we just, we're never going to have enough money to get it, to get all the, the motor officers that we want out on the streets, even if we could get them. And I know how hard it is to even hire them and, and put them through our training. So that's not really an option. I think the option is going to be road engineering. And one thing I wanted to mention, um, is, um, something that I know, um, our chief is interested in, which is automated speed enforcement. Um, I, I've been, I've spoken to him, I've spoken to our state assembly member and our state senator about, um, about this. And there are two bills going through Sacramento now, which would allow us to pilot, um, automated speed enforcement in certain parts of the city. And, and I would like us to follow those. One is AB 550 by David Chu, um, which focuses on kind of, uh, high collision corridors. And the other is, um, by, uh, Senator Rubio, it's SB 735, and that focuses on schools. Um, uh, but the point here is that, uh, this would be a new approach where the cameras would take pictures of the license plate. And these would be, um, uh, civil, not criminal offenses. And basically, the, the, the fine would be like a parking fine. It would go to the car, not to the driver. Um, so you get away from a lot of the, um, privacy issues. You're not doing facial recognition, um, and you don't have the issue of somebody saying, well, that wasn't me driving the car, that was my kid took the car out for a spin, right? You, you attach it to the car just like a, um, just like a, um, a parking ticket. Uh, and we know what happens when people don't pay their parking tickets, they build up and then their, their cars get, uh, get towed, right? So, um, I really like that, and, and, um, and there is some evidence that, that, you know, automated speed enforcement can make a difference. There's some issues with equity, um, but there are things in the bills that would address equity. Um, so I hope we can keep an eye on those. I hope we can support those, because I think that would be another great tool in our toolbox. Um, just, uh, two other things I want to say, uh, and then I'll be done. And one of them is, um, bicycle transportation plan. I think we, um, it's very closely connected to what we're talking about here. We need to update our bicycle transportation plan, and we should, uh, do that this year if we can. Um, and the last thing is, as far as Vision Zero, I totally support, um, us, uh, putting together a, a, a resolution with, uh, target dates and, and goals. Uh, I would prefer annual reporting, not semi-annual or not, not every two-year reporting. Um, I think with Vision Zero, you know, it's a lofty goal. Can we actually reduce injuries and collisions to zero ourselves in the city? I don't know. I think, um, getting to zero is going to involve a lot of different things, including, um, changes to, to car technology. Um, but I think there is a lot we can do, and we should do what we can. So I totally support us having a Vision Zero, uh, policy, set of goals, and tracking how we're doing, um, because that will keep us focused on this plan and the bicycle plan and everything we need to be doing to slow traffic and make streets safer. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comment, Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I'll try and keep it brief. Uh, you know, I agree with everything that's been said. This is a, uh, this is a project, pedestrian safety, that is never completed. We're never done with it. Uh, you know, I started working on it in 2008. We had the experts come in, and, uh, city staff really took a hold of it, and, uh, it's not going to be done tonight. It's not going to be done in five years. It's something we have to continue working on and adapting and developing. Uh, one of the interesting slides was, um, the consumer or the pedestrian sentiment about why they wouldn't walk or they would walk more if. And most, most of those had to do with safety, fear of cars, lighting, uh, you know, more enforcement and, and all those things. So clearly pedestrians are afraid of getting hit by a car, as, as well they should be. This is a notorious city. Unfortunately, one of our, um, you know, infamous, uh, reputations is for a very badly drive, uh, badly driven city. And we just have to, we have to do that. The physical, the engineering is clearly a very strong part of it. Uh, enforcement doesn't scale, but we, we do need that enforcement arm out there, uh, as best we can. Education, you know, yeah, you know, Mr. Botman's right. It's, you know, you can speak till you're blue in the face, put posters up and, uh, public service ads on GTV6. Uh, you're not sure if it's going to happen. We've got too many people that feel entitled that, that the speed laws, the safety laws don't apply to them. Um, I think one of the keys, a component of this, is getting people out of their cars. And, and yes, I am an advocate for transit. I do want people to get out of their cars, uh, to get into transit, whether it's a B-line bus or a Metro bus or the new BRT that's coming, uh, but also to get on their bicycles and become, uh, pedestrians. The, the question about funding is very valid. Uh, we need to look at that, but I do want to let staff know that, um, you know, being involved with Metro, we're not just transit highways and Metro rail, but we have a very robust active transportation budget. An active transportation means any sort of transportation that isn't of a motor-driven, if you will. It's pedestrian, it's, it's biking. So those funds do become available. Uh, they're becoming in vogue now as freeways and highway budgets seem to be pared down and more money placed into that. So please feel free to work with, um, with Metro. I can help direct you if we need grants, if we need funding. I can't, I can't guarantee it's going to be an annual fund, a funding process, which would be great, you know, the sustainable funding. But at least, uh, we can apply for grants and knock out some of the more, uh, devious locations and dangerous locations that we have throughout the city, uh, in supplement with our, with our city funds. And of course, there is the state funding that's, that's always out there, and, uh, who knows, we might get something from the federal government as well in their infrastructure plan. So good job, staff. And, yeah, I think a young Rubik Galanian was working on this way back when he was an engineer, city engineer. And, uh, look, look what's happened now. So let's keep working, uh, council and community, and, um, you know, it's one of those things where we just have to work all the time and hopefully chip away at the, uh, the problems that we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Is there any other comment? All right, I guess, uh, is, anybody wants to move the item?
Mayor, I do have.
I'm sorry, there is caller, there is caller. I'm sorry, I have to go to the caller.
Okay.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, uh, Mr. Agarjani. Uh, um, I mean, I'm sorry. No one has ever contacted the resident, me, I'm a resident on Chevy Chase Drive, ever. Where is this community development located? In Alaska? They don't even know of the street. No one has ever contacted for any information for pedestrian safety. I know of one intersection where there was a major accident of a person, of a very famous person that you all know, and it, it needs, uh, stripes for pedestrian crossing, that would help, but no one from the city has ever asked anything about pedestrian safety on Chevy Chase Drive. It's a street. I'm just letting you know. No one has ever asked anything. That's all I wanted to say. I'll be back for E. And I'm just, I didn't take my blood pressure pills, so I'm up and up tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Thank you very much.
I hope you forgive me. Bye.
Thank you. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, there's somebody on the line, but I can't tell, but I'm not going to take any more callers, it looks like.
Okay. All right. Uh, Ms. Devine, Councilmember Devine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's fine. Um, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, there was a young Paula Devine there at some of those meetings as well. Uh, I, I really, um, I'm aware of all of the meetings and all of the residents that, uh, that were involved in, uh, in, in this particular plan, uh, safety plan. Um, uh, I remember Mauro and Alec being there and, uh, quite, quite a few residents. We always had a, a good crowd at the, at these meetings, uh, who were will, more than willing to give their, um, opinions. Um, you know, we're always preaching that the five Es or the three Es, education, engineering, and, uh, enforcement, and, uh, engineering is very important, and I know that that's, that's basically what this is, this is all about. Uh, so I, I really thank staff, uh, for all the hours, the hours in the meetings, uh, that you, uh, that you held, uh, to put this plan together. Very comprehensive. Um, I am sure that we, we can, uh, look at the budget next year and find funding for this plan. It might come from the federal government, maybe even Measure S funding, since this is something that will benefit the entire community. Um, we can, uh, hopefully we can make that happen. I do want to say to, to, uh, Mr. Coward, that, um, I hope that in the short term, uh, the trees are included. And also be aware, and I think that you already are, that I like creativity. Uh, I saw on, um, then the news, a, an intersection in Long Beach that was painted, and it was absolutely amazing. It was a work of art, and I would love to see something like that here in Glendale. And I'm sure, I'm sure that that will slow down traffic. Um, as far as the automated speed enforcement, I did read that comprehensive article in the LA Times. Uh, it sounded interesting. Uh, you know, we did the red, the red light, uh, the, uh, the pictures and the, the red light, um, running red lights, and of course, that didn't work, uh, because there wasn't enforcement. We didn't go after the people, and they fought it. And hopefully, if something like this comes to fruition, if these, uh, this Assembly Bill or Senate Bill pass, uh, this automated speed enforcement can be used here in Glendale, and hopefully we'll have the, uh, the, the power, uh, to, uh, carry through with the enforcement of, of that, uh, that process. So thank you. Uh, it's really important that we ensure pedestrian safety in our community. Uh, we've just seen too much tragedy in the, in the last five, six, well, what, the eight years that I've been on council. And so I'm, I'm very happy that this has finally come, uh, to council, and, uh, I am more than willing to support it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone, and thank you, staff, for hard work. I guess, as has been mentioned here, this goes on for a long time, and I just wanted the public to see, this is what I had to read. So as you can see, it's only a few pages. It's so heavy, and maybe I'm getting back pain now because I'm holding this. Anyway, is there, are we going to vote on this? Is there support? Do we have, do we?
Well, I'll move the item if, if no one else wants to, or I'll second it if somebody has already moved it.
Uh, yeah, yes.
So do we have? Who moved it?
I don't think.
Okay. We have the second roll call, please. And where the money will come from and when will come from, anyway? Is there any indication?
Mayor, Mayor Agarjani, members of city council, as it was noted earlier tonight, there are, uh, multiple sources that in the past we have utilized funds for, and Councilman Najarian mentioned ATP being one of them. We have utilized gas tax monies on individual projects that included these, uh, types of improvements. Uh, Measure S was mentioned by Councilmember Devine. Uh, Measure M is a source, so multiple sources that we can tap into, uh, but we do not currently have a dedicated source, uh, of a regular injection into a fund that we can utilize this for. Our budget review, uh, sessions are coming up, so that would be, there would be an opportunity to further discuss, uh, allocation of funds for these types of projects.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Botman?
I just wanna clarify that Councilmember Devine's motion for adopting the mitigated negative declaration and also for adopting the pedestrian plan.
One, two, and three.
Yes. Okay, and as far as, if I could, as far as number three goes, are we giving direction to work towards a Vision Zero policy?
Not tonight. Not tonight.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it looks like that.
Mr. Garcia.
The motion at AB three is to provide direction on the implementation steps that were identified in the report. So council wants to hear those later, then you wouldn't move on that one, you would just move on AB one and two. But if you wanna have, provide some direction, some additional direction, you would use AB three to do that.
Well, I could do this as a separate motion if you'd like, Councilmember Devine.
Um, that's fine with me. It's okay. I just thought we'd get the implementation going. We can discuss Vision Zero at a later date. That would be my option, but whatever my colleagues wanna do.
Perhaps, I think that's a good suggestion by Councilmember Brodmann to take the vote on AB one and two, and then if Councilmember Brodmann wants to make a motion on AB three, he can do so and see if it has support.
Okay. And I'll move B one and two.
Okay. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Councilman Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next one?
Hold on, hold on.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion directing staff to begin work on options for a Vision Zero policy. That would include a set of golden timelines and a reporting process.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be HC, City Attorney, Ratification and Extension of Emergency Public Orders. One, Resolution Extending and Amending Emergency Public Orders Relating to Al Fresco Dining, Including Expanding Use to Allow Tents, Canopies, Umbrellas, and Heaters, Outdoor Retail Establishments, Personal Care Establishments, Outdoor Gym and Dance Academies, and Outdoor Use of Banquet Halls. Two, Resolution Ratifying Emergency Public Order Number 2025, Temporarily Suspending Condition 19 of Use Variants and Standards Variants for Shalmeon School Pertaining to vehicular, excuse me, access to assist school reopening in order to comply with California Department of Public Health Guidelines. And Three, Resolution Extending Emergency Public Orders Relating to Moratorium on Certain Commercial Evictions.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager Rubik Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council, I'm gonna just turn it over to our City Attorney, Mike Garcia, for the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, and Arm, if you could pull up that PowerPoint. Mr. Mayor and Council, there are three emergency orders that are before you for consideration for either ratification or extension. If you go to the next slide.
Give me a second. Let me pull this up while it's getting stuck here. It is getting stuck. Give me a second.
So one having to do with the outdoor business activities, so Al Fresco Dining, Outdoor Retail, Outdoor Use of Gyms and Facilities, those things, those are all going to expire on March 31st, so the council has recommended that the council continue those or extend those, excuse me, at least till June 30th. Some of those activities, indoor activity, has been allowed, but have reduced activities, so it makes sense to continue the allowance for outdoor use of those, or outdoor activity related to those business activities. So in addition, with respect to the outdoor dining, there are some revised guidelines for that to include tents and canopies, that type of activity is already occurring, but this would incorporate the fire department's safety guidelines for that type of activity. Go ahead, the next slide, Arm. The other item is the commercial eviction moratorium. I'm happy to discuss that one as well in more detail with Councilwoman, but essentially this is a moratorium on commercial evictions set to expire on March 31st as well. The LA County has extended theirs until June 30th. The governor has issued an emergency order allowing local agencies to continue commercial eviction moratoriums through June 30th, and then a number of our neighbor cities have extended theirs to at least June 30th or beyond in some cases, including LA City, Clover City, and Pasadena. Next slide, please. So the other item has to do with the Shalmeon School. There was, as we've noted in the report, that school has a conditional, sorry, a variance, a use variance and a standards variance for the allowance of the school along with, you know, that allowed some expansion a couple of years ago. And one of the conditions was a condition that limits access from Second Avenue to only maintenance vehicles and by pedestrians. So as part of their reopening plan, the California Department of Public Health has a requirement that they stagger their drop-offs and arrivals and then use as many entrances and exits as feasible to allow such staggered drop-offs and arrivals. So they requested some consideration of alleviation of that condition during the emergency period. So Mr. Galanian, in his role as the Director of Emergency Services, issued an emergency order to lift that condition for the purpose, can you go to the next slide, please? For the limited purpose of allowing the staggered drop-offs and the spacing that's necessary to do that. So this is what was presented to us. This is allowing, obviously, the access off a Lowell and then to use that drive aisle behind the school and then to drop off onto Second Avenue. And so otherwise, you would see, if you had very staggered drop-off and arrival, they're probably backing up all the way to Bella and beyond. If you can go to the next slide, please. This kinda just, it's a bigger picture, but it shows where Second Avenue, I'm not sure you can see it, but the Lowell is obviously on the left, and then Second Avenue obviously goes down and goes down further. So that kinda gives you a pictorial depiction of how it would work. So again, the order that would need to be ratified by the council to be, to continue in effect, would lift that Condition 19, again, for the limited purposes as I've described. It would be, the emergency order would cease to be in effect upon either the City Council determining that the emergency is over and declaring it so, or if the California Department of Public Health determines that staggered drop-offs and the use of as many exits and entrances as feasible is no longer necessary. So when either one of those conditions occurs, then this emergency condition, the emergency order will be lifted, and then that Condition 19 will be back in effect. So I think, is there any other slide? I think, so I have, I can get into a little more detail on some of the others if council has them, but those are the three items that we are asking for to extend. The orders related to outdoor dining and outdoor business activity, there's no, the council has the option to extend the commercial eviction moratorium to be in line with the county and the other agencies if it so chooses, and then council, staff is asking for council to ratify the emergency order on Condition Number 19 for Shalmeon. Happy to answer any questions related to those.
You wanna go through this one?
Only if you'd like, and that was just at the back of the, you go to the back, the last.
The first one, you mean?
No, always go to the end.
Okay.
One more?
Again, that's just showing what the deadlines are for some, for our sister cities, other organizations that have commercial eviction moratoriums. Burbank is also, they haven't extended yet, but my understanding they have an agenda.
Mike, you're not going through your.
I apologize. So this, all this chart does is show what our sister cities and other agencies are doing related to the commercial eviction moratorium. And I would note, I think Clover City extended theirs to go until the emergency is over. Burbank is considering the same thing that you are tonight. They'll be doing that next week. And then County of Los Angeles, as I mentioned, has extended theirs till June 30th as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Is there any question? Do we have callers, please?
Mayor, we do have a caller on item HC.
Item, you sign them?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Peter Balasaiyan, you're live. Peter?
Hi there. I just wanna say, my name's Peter Bagdusarian, I'm a resident of Glendale for 40-plus years. I'm also an alumni of Shalmeon School and now serve on the board for Shalmeon, and I just wanna thank the city for making the swift move to allow us this opportunity to open safely. It's been a tremendously challenging year, as it has been for many businesses and many schools, and it is incredible that we're finally open and having kids on the campus. Really, we appreciate the work of the city staff and the city council, and we also appreciate our neighbors for being cooperative. We also wanna thank the Glendale Police Department for ensuring that this process works smoothly.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdusarian. Next caller, please, if there is any.
Mayor, that was the final caller.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any comment, Council?
Can I ask?
Yes, Councilmember Button.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So on the Shalmeon School, we've all gotten a lot of emails on that, so I just wanna clarify. So this, is it correct to say this is a requirement, not a recommendation from Department of Public Health that they have staggered drop-offs and maximize the ingress and egress points?
That's correct. That's the understanding that we have.
Okay. And is it, somebody asked, you know, where is this published? How can they see it? You know, there's understandable, you know, concern, and is there something that, can we provide that?
Councilmember Brodmann, we will endeavor to get that material and provide it. I'm not sure if Mr. Lansvame has any additional information on that, but again, there's, I think there's the published guidelines, and then there's also, they actually have to go through a process to get approval, and it could have possibly been as a condition of that approval, but.
Okay, well, if we could get that out, I mean, to me or to, you know, because we have all these emails, and one of us could, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but we could go back and share that with people, because there's some, you know, there were questions about that. There's also, there was some questions about when this goes into effect. Now, this already went into effect when the city manager made the declaration, right?
That's correct.
We're basically ratifying that?
That's correct.
Okay. So it went into effect, what, a few days ago?
It was March 2nd or 3rd.
Okay.
I'm not sure that they started utilizing it then, but that's when the order was issued.
That was, okay. And then it would automatically expire either on June 30th, is that what we're saying? Or earlier, if this requirement from Department of Public Health is lifted?
No, it would expire either when the emergency is over, the local emergency is over, as declared by the council, or when the California Department of Public Health declares that it no longer requires the staggered drop-offs. So it's not tied to a certain date.
It's not tied to a date, but as soon as they lift that requirement, and I imagine they would lift that requirement possibly as we move into the next tier or the tier after that. So it could be, it could be any time, right? And so it would be automatic? I mean, we would get notified immediately? We would notify the school immediately? Can we give assurances to the community that that's an airtight process?
We will, Councilmember Brodmann, we will work to identify when it is that the California Department of Public Health will no longer require, impose that requirement, and I'm not sure when that will be. I can't speak to it, but we'll, I'll work with the staff to figure out what the process and the notifications will be, and we'll provide that information.
Okay. And then finally, if there's anything that we can do to ensure that, you know, the administration of the school, you know, communicates with parents about, you know, being respectful for the neighborhood's concerns, I think they may have already done that. So I assume that they're doing that, but if we could just kind of reiterate to them the importance of doing that, and if we could have any, maybe a little bit extra TLC from our police department for a time period, just to make sure everything is smooth, I think that would ally a lot of the fears that people have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody wants to move the item or items?
I wanted to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Councilmember Devine.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, it's clear that the city is required by the Department of Public Health to provide the opening of Second Avenue, and this is to limit direct contact between people in case the residents don't know. So, and it is temporary. It's not forever. It's temporary. However, we have been getting emails about safety issues, particularly in regard to speeding. And so I would like to reiterate that in ratifying this emergency public order, I would request the Glendale Police Department provide continuous patrol along Second Avenue as much as they can until the public order is, as long as the public order is in effect. I realize, I understand that they were there yesterday, and it helped, and so I hope that they will continue to visit Second Avenue and ensure that people get the message that, you know, speeding is dangerous, and we wanna keep everybody safe. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, anybody wants to move? Mr. Najarian?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian?
Yeah, so, you know, definitely, we got those emails, and they're talking about speeding, but they're also talking about residents not having any place to walk, that they're walking in the street. So maybe we need sidewalks up there on Second Avenue. I mean, that's what their emails are saying, that it's very, that they feel safe because there's no cars, but, you know, part of our pedestrian plan, I'm sure, involves putting sidewalks in to make pedestrians more safe, and we shouldn't exclude northern Glendale in that consideration. So I mean, I'm not sure how long this is gonna last, the orders, I think, probably just a matter of a few months, but maybe they need sidewalks up there. So. So. It's not a motion, let's just think about that.
Mr. Kasakian?
I think I'm ready to vote, and with the motions that were made by my colleagues, you know, I think that the school, this isn't the preferred scenario for the school either, for anyone to think that it is, you know, whether it's someone from the community or a neighboring street that's impacted. I hope they understand that we're all having to make sacrifices, including the school itself. So let's all hope and pray and work towards the conclusion of this, of the worst part of this pandemic, and then after that, you know, it's not my intention or anyone else's intention to make this, these temporary accommodations permanent. So let's, I would vote for this and happy to commence with that.
And I hope that this emergency situation will be lifted by June 30th, and the neighborhood gonna go back to where they were before. So I'm very familiar with that area, and I know it's causing problem for the neighborhood, but however, this is an emergency situation. So anybody wants to move the item?
I'll make them, well, I believe, Councilmember Devine, did you not make the motions?
Ms. Devine?
But I will. I'll move the item.
Sure, in that case, I'll second it.
Now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8D, City Attorney, Regarding Approval of City Manager Employment Agreement with Rubik Galanian. D, Motion Approving City Manager's Employment Agreement.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council provided a direction regarding the terms of Mr. Galanian's employment agreement as a city manager, and we prepared the agreement in accordance with those terms, and after discussion, negotiation with Mr. Galanian. So before you, the employment agreement for the council's consideration, it includes, among other terms, a three-year term, subject to renewal by the parties, a starting base salary of $278,000 per year, subject to consideration of. subject to consideration of an increase after the first year. And then it also includes a severance provision in the event of a termination without cause. So those are the key provisions, and then it's got the usual standard provisions in an employment agreement. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Anybody wants to move the item?
Hold on, do you have any caller?
Do we have any caller?
Mayor, I do not have any caller.
Okay. Anybody wants to move the item?
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have the Mr. Najarian and Councilmember Devine. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajani?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be Community Development regarding temporary urgency ordinance requiring additional hourly pay, hero pay for frontline grocery store and drug retail workers. E would be, E1 would be urgency ordinance for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yes. Mayor Agajani, Member City Council, this was in response to a request by Councilmember Devine at last council meeting. And I am going to turn it over to Phil Lansafame, our Community Development Director, for a report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, on March 9th, you had asked us to bring this forward to consider an emergency ordinance for hero pay for frontline grocery and drugstore workers. During COVID-19, many heroes have been identified, including those in our organization. Grocery store and drugstore workers have been identified as a group particularly at risk, given the conditions in which they work, and the potential effects, both physical and psychological, of their working environment. They are essential in the sense that they are maintaining the food chain, the supply chain of food and medicine, that we all have, we need to continue with a healthy life. It's been especially heightened with the closure of restaurants, more people getting food and preparing it at home. There are several studies out there about the infection rate of grocery and drug workers. In some cases, it's 20% more. It was up to 40% during the first months of COVID, more than other industries that were, that had essential workers. The City Council, as I said two weeks ago, proposed hero pay as a means of just compensation for those unprecedented risks. In recognition of the hazards that these workers were encountering in the early going, many of the large retailers had hazard pay, not incentives, but hazard pay compensation. Here is a listing. This is from the Brookings Institution study that was done. They were generally 2 to 250 per hour in addition to regular pay. Those programs ended in May, June of 2020. There really wasn't any, any program at all when we hit that second big surge in November. And then again, in, in January of this year, nothing, and they were continuing to work. I will say that there are some exceptions to this. Trader Joe, Target increased their, and you see it here on the screen, Target increased their minimum wage to $15 per hour here in Los Angeles during 2020. That was a $2 premium. And this year, 2021, $1. Next year, minimum wage will go to $15 here in California. Costco, who is not in represented in Glendale, also had a premium that they were paying. In lieu of the hazard pay, many, many large corporations are doing something around vaccine and providing vaccine incentives. Kroger has $100 for the employee if they get the vaccine. They have announced a $50 million investment to thank their associates. That would be $100 in store credit and 1,000 fuel points. I'm sorry, it should be there. 1,000 fuel points. Those go on their loyalty cards, and then they can spend them. Target has a four hours of pay, two hours per each dose for employees that are going to get the vaccine. They also provide transportation back and forth with a lift credit. In looking at this, much has been made about the, the profits, the windfalls, if you will, that growth, the grocery stores have earned. Again, this is from our research. These figures that you have here for Kroger and Albertsons, Walgreens, those were in the first two quarters of 2020. Kroger, a 90% increase. Albertsons, 153%. Now, Albertsons is, I'm sorry, Kroger is closer, when you look at the entire year, they're, they're closer to just over 50% increase. But it is a variable that cited as justification for hero pay and, and sharing those profits with those that are at risk. Some local jurisdictions have already taken action. 18 have adopted an ordinance. They are generally $3 to $5 per hour in addition as, as hazard or hero pay. Generally speaking, it is larger retailers, 300 or more employees nationwide, or 10 to a store. And they have been running these for 120 days, four months, and then it sunsets. There are, we've, we identified six jurisdictions that were considering the ordinance. This was at the time of preparation. I will note that Pasadena yesterday rejected a hero pay ordinance. It was a 4-4 tie, but not enough to adopt the ordinance. So Pasadena does not have hero pay at this time. Some of the potential impacts. I think a lot has been made of Kroger and store closures. They have announced five in Southern California, another two or three in Seattle, where hero pay kind of originated. It's, there is some speculation that the stores that were underperforming were identified before the pandemic and would have closed anyway, were slated for closure. Kroger has said, though, that their closing means they simply cannot maintain the store with the hazard pay. Here are the, the stores in Los Angeles, and then two in Long Beach. Some other impacts, potentially, we don't know that this is the case, but what we were able to identify in the week that we prepared this, perhaps higher prices for consumers to offset that additional cost. Potentially delayed wage and promotions among employees that are receiving the hero pay. Those, those planned increases or promotions may be delayed or put on hold. Reduced hours, wages, or jobs, even job loss for people that, employees that are working, again, to try and reduce costs, offsetting that increase from hero pay. This next one, potential loss of benefits, just something we should think about. This really goes to somebody that might be in a very low income bracket. Wage in Glendale for grocery store earner is about $35,000, which puts him in a very low income bracket. Were they to receive 17 weeks, say, 16 weeks, they might start to inch up near the cap of very low, and potentially jeopardize any benefits that they might be receiving. We don't think that food stamps would be something here. I think the store earners, store employees probably make more than, than the food stamp qualification. But there may be other things like some kind of benefit, even to the extent that you're looking at Section 8 incomes or some of our subsidized housing. We don't think that it'll be, it'll be something that is overwhelming and puts everybody out of that category, but something to think about. On the positive side, it will be an infusion of cash to grocery store workers and drugstore workers that may potentially see an increase in spending. There are eight cities that are facing legal challenge at this time. The challenges have come from the California Grocers Association. Generally, they have cited the Equal Protections Clause in the Constitution in that other groups are being treated differently. They also have cited the National Labor Relations Act, which is intended to protect the integrity of the collective bargaining process. This seems to be a benefit that is coming outside of that process. That's the argument that they've made. They did ask for a temporary restraining order in Long Beach. It was rejected by a federal judge. They have appealed that to the Ninth Circuit Court. We've identified grocery stores in Glendale that might be affected by this. There's 16 grocery stores and eight drugstores. The drugstores are on the next, the next slide I'll show in just a minute. But here are the stores on the left, where they are, where they're located, and the number of employees. They all have in excess of 10. Most of these companies, if not all of them, will employ more than 300 nationally. These are the drugstores. So some quick summary of what the, what's contained in the ordinance. On the left-hand side, really, are the pay requirements. $5 an hour is, the council had talked about a range between $3 and $5. We have drafted the ordinance with $5, but certainly something that could be changed. The duration, four months. Again, that's what we've seen generally from cities that are doing this. But Glendale, you could craft something different. Would only be applicable to hourly employees. We've mentioned a couple of times, but the way we're drafted is, the employer, that is, the national entity, either has, is traded as a public stock, employs 300 or more nationwide, and has 10 or more employees in the store that affected. We also look at big retailers of 85,000 square feet. If they're dedicating at least 10% of their floor area for sales of grocery, then everybody would be included in that. On some of the, the regulation side, the employers that are voluntarily providing some kind of hazard pay or hero pay would get credit for that. In the case of Trader Joe's, they have $4 in addition to base pay that they are providing to their hourly workers. If you adopted something at 5, the Trader Joe's would have to pay an additional $1. So they would get credit for the 4 and pay for one more. Employers are required to notify employees and post in the workplace, single out in the record-keeping, and during the pay period. We, in talking to the representatives from the local grocers representatives, they believe that stores, it's, it's been implemented in enough cities already that stores know how to do this. Employers know how to do this and should be pretty quick to set it up. We do require them to keep payroll records of the time and pay. We can have access, we the city, that is, as an enforcement agency, access to the records and interview their employees if there's a complaint. We have some standard anti-retaliatory provisions in there. Anybody that seeks to benefit from this can't be treated unfairly, fired, reduced in pay, or hours, anything like that. Enforcement, we have all of our administrative enforcement, as well as the ability for any employer to sue the, I'm sorry, employee, to sue the employer. Our administrative enforcement comes with identified fines for violations. We have plugged in a grace period of 10 days. This is being presented to you as an urgency ordinance, which requires four-fifths council approval to go into effect. And so it would, if, if adopted next week, if introduced and adopted next week, it would go into effect immediately. Couple of things on that. The grace period would give employers 10 days to make those payments. And, but they couldn't go past the next pay period to catch up and make sure. This is just to allow them time to set up the various record-keeping and notification that we're requiring. I will, I would like to note, in drafting this, we, we found a couple of errors that, that actually pointed out. The grace period is 10 days, but in Section 3 and 4, we also included 10 days. That should be immediate. That's when the, when the ordinance would take effect. There is also reference in Section 5.112.160 that says Friday, in, in other words, the Friday following approval, that should be Wednesday. So again, if the council introduces tonight and adopts next week on the 30th, it would become effective at 12:01, Wednesday, March 31st. These are, again, the categories, main categories of areas that council had discussion. I've, I've outlined what was included in the ordinance, but I will leave this, or I'll put this back when we're finished, if you want to change any of those. Some alternatives for you, introduce the temporary urgency ordinance as presented by staff. You could direct us to make some changes to that. We will go ahead and make the change to the, the errors that we have and when it's effective. Alternative 3, you could elect not to pursue this at this time. Wait and see what other cities do, what, what happens with the lawsuit. And then, of course, our standard, you could do an alternative that is not proposed by staff, something that you come up with in your deliberations. That concludes my report. I'll, I'll put it back to this, if you'd like to use it for reference. Staff that prepared this, John Bandek, who did the research, is on the line with me, as well as the City Attorney's Office, Jillian Van Miden, very instrumental in putting the ordinance together and doing the research. The team is here, if you have any questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Lansafame. What's the difference between alternative 1 and 2 again?
Alternative 2 would be that you direct us to scale back. Maybe it's instead of $5 an hour, it's $4 an hour.
Oh, I see.
Instead of 120 days, you make it 90 days.
I see.
It's not an urgency ordinance, something like that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any quest, is there any caller?
Mayor, I do have six callers.
So let's go to the callers.
Roy Velazquez. Roy, you're live. Go ahead.
Yes, hey, I'm Roy Velazquez. I'm from Ralph 97 in Glendale. I was on this call a couple of weeks ago regarding the $5 increase for the four months. And just here to reiterate everything that we spoke about before, and I'm sure a lot of people feel the same way. And just so you know, that we've opened up to 50% capacity from 35% capacity allotment of customers in our stores, that we continue to be exposed to any element of COVID or any of the, anything of that nature. And here in Glendale, we are the number two. We have the most high traffic, we have more, the most customers in our district, and that's out of 25 stores, with your, being the only one that has a higher customer count. We get over 20, 21, 22,000 customers per week. So once again, it just speaks to, to what the exposure and everything that we go through here in Glendale. And we're able to retain our customers. We have our customers, and, and we're very glad for that. And we continue to put our best foot forward. We come to work. We've done our due We come to work, we've done our due diligence, we've done well for the company, for our store in general. And as it is, our store in general has put $3.3 million to the bottom line, which is way over the year prior. So the company is clearly flourishing off our efforts here at Store 97, and I'm sure the other Glendale stores can speak to that. We're very successful here, and I just feel like the $5 for the 4 months is adequate. It's appropriate, and our customers are always thanking us for being here for them. And, you know, a lot of people have lost their lives over this pandemic, over the COVID, but we continue to come to work, put our best foot forward, and always do a good job for not only the company, but for the customer and, in essence, the community of Glendale. And, you know, I think that's all I could say. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we can meet in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Next caller, please.
Mike Mohill, you're live, Mike, go ahead. Mike, Mike Mohill?
Hi, there. Mr. Lanzafe, I'd like to thank you very much for an excellent report by you and your staff. I'd like to highlight a couple of things that you did miss, which is in the report, that you failed to mention the fact that there will be potential higher prices for consumers by these companies. There's also a potential delay in wages increases or promotions because of this increases in these wages now, reduce hours, wages, or jobs offset in the near future, and also potential loss of benefits. Also, you know, who made Governor Gavin Newsom King to force these employers to give hazardous pay? If these companies in the future have to file for bankruptcy protection for any reason, will the state of California, the taxidermist bail out these companies? Is that a fair statement? Also, want to be talking about a couple of stores that are underperforming here in Glendale. Ralph's on Wilson Avenue by City Hall is underperforming. Just walk in, there's hardly ever anybody there. Von's Market, Glendale Avenue, and C V Pharmacy over here on Chevy Chase and Broadway. I bet you $10 that should this go into effect, those three establishments will close their doors. Do we want that? Seriously? Do we want to force store closure? We already seen in Long Beach and other places of the county and the state have closed those doors because not every store is a winner. And what you're doing, you're forcing store closing, and you're going to make the very wealthy-run stores be very successful, and those that are not, you're going to put them under the bridge. Is this your goal? This should be a volunteer by the, if, you know, if Trader Joe, Whole Foods, any of these companies want to volunteer and do this for their employees, great. But to force an employer to pay additional money is not right. Don't get me wrong, I'm glad that we have these heroes, but let me ask you a question. When you go to, let's see, Macy's, are those heroes, those employees? When you go to a Burgess Hardware Store, are those heroes that answer your, help you with the key made or the computer store? There's all kinds of heroes besides just grocery employees and pharmacy employees. They're all over the state. But these, unfortunately, these employees don't belong to a major company. They're little mom and popper stores. But the print shop, oh, when you go to, oh, how about when you go to your barber or your hairdresser, and she cuts your hair, he cuts your hair? Should he get hazardous duty pay? I mean, where does it end? Is it just for the pharmacy employees and the grocery store employees? Thank you on this one. And also, one quick point on our new city manager, congratulations. I hope within 60 days you become a resident of Glendale as per the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next caller, please.
Dina Weston, you're live, Dina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Dina Weston. I used to work at Von's on Glendale Avenue, and now I am a union representative for all of Glendale's Ralph's, Von's, Rite Aid, and CVS stores. I currently cover just over 700 members who have lived in fear each and every day during this pandemic in order to make sure that your community have access to food and prescriptions. As the last caller just mentioned, the Macy's stores and the hardware stores and things like that, please remember that those stores were closed while our members stayed and had to work every day. As COVID-19 cases increased, so did the profits of these companies. They made record-breaking profits while our members continued to show up and serve the community. Even as they themselves faced COVID-19 workplace hazards and hostile customers, they still showed up every single day so that Glendale had access to their essentials. Now is the time to show these dedicated grocery and drugstore workers that they deserve this $5 an hour hazard pay. We urge you to pass this ordinance, and I appreciate you for your time.
Thank you, Dina. Next caller, please.
Aviana Macias, Aviana? Go ahead.
Yes, yes, hi.
Hi.
I am a worker for Von's Market in Glendale. I worked at our location on Los Feliz. I've been there two years since the pandemic started. I also am a mother, single mother of three kids. I go to work every day, rain or shine, COVID or not, put myself at risk, not only myself, but the probability of bringing it back to my family at home, which, you know, three little kids at home makes it very dangerous. Since COVID has started, it has made it very difficult to do the job without having hostility, grouchy customers, people that are scared coming in in fear of us infecting them, them infecting us. We deal with one after the other. I'm a checker, I'm in a check stand all day long. We don't have the choice. We have to go to work to support our families. Yeah, like he said, why force you guys to give it to us? It's not about forcing, it's that we deserve it, we work hard. And once again, this has been one of the scariest things that a lot of people around the world have had to deal with in a long time, and it would just make us feel a lot better and maybe worthy if we could get a little bit of recognition for that. You know, we're not asking for much, we're just asking for what's fair. And thank you for your time, that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Ms. Macias. Next caller, please.
Linda Parrott, Linda, you're live, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much for listening to me. My name is Linda Parrott. I work at the Von's on Glendale Avenue, and I've been a Von's employee for 42 years. I've been going to work every day in this whole pandemic, and I am scared. I am scared of getting COVID, but thank God I have not. And I would just really, I think that grocery workers and drugstore workers really deserve hazard pay. We've earned it. And I really thank you for your time right now, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Linda Parrott. Next caller, please.
Victoria Valentine, you're live, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
To keep our cars in working condition during COVID-19 was essential to take us to the grocery store for once. So would it be possible that the additional hourly pay called hero pay be required for Glendale dealership service repair workers to recognize car repair workers as essential? Now, hero is one thing, but hero, pay to a hero, that sounds strange to me, the term. So that's all, that's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Okay, anybody wants to move this item or wants to say something? Express yourself.
I have a few questions, if I could.
Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, just a question. So for Mr. Garcia on these lawsuits, so assuming that the Grocers Association would, I guess, would extend the lawsuit to Glendale? If they do, what kinds of costs are we talking about? What kinds of risks are we talking about? Could you run through?
Sure, I'm going to have Ms. Van Miden answer that question because she's been following the litigation much more closely than I have.
Okay.
Ms. Van Miden?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I can see you too.
Mayor, Councilmember Brotman. Risks, are you referring to the financial risk to the city in terms of the cost of defending such a lawsuit? Or are you also referring to the risk of losing the defense of this suit and having our ordinance overturned, or both?
I'm talking mostly about the cost for us to participate, to defend the ordinance. And then, if the ordinance is found to be illegal, are there going to be penalties or any other costs that we would incur?
Let me answer your first question first, and that is what the cost would be to the city. We would have to make an internal determination of whether or not we could handle it in-house, and that would be a decision, of course, that our city attorney would weigh in on, and whether or not we would seek outside council's assistance. So it's hard to predict at this point what that financial cost might entail. So it depends on whether we handle it internally or we do hire out for that purpose, and the extent of the suit, whether or not it would match the claims that are currently being made against the city of Long Beach and others that have been recounted in the report. As in terms of the cost, difficult to calculate. That would potentially include exposure with respect to attorney's fees. And I would imagine the prayer for relief in terms of damage would include those, the hero pay itself, whatever the extent of that would be hard to predict as well until we see what those records look like for all of the stores in the city of Glendale that would be subject to having their hourly employees receive the hero pay.
So you're saying potentially we could be liable for recovery of this pay differential if we were to, if the ordinance was found to be illegal?
If it were paid out, and here's the thing, the ordinance would be in short-term effect, and we would need to calculate out what that differential would be. Right now, the order denying the preliminary injunction makes it pretty clear that on the merits so far with respect to the First Amendment, I'm sorry, the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment, as well as the NLRB preemption and contractual interference, based on the court's rejection of that preliminary injunction, the likelihood of success on the merits does not look good at this point in time. It's the only case that we have to go on at this moment. It is pending assignment of the judge on appeal at the Ninth Circuit. And so it's difficult to predict. Asking me to read the tea leaves a little bit, because we don't know what the results of that lawsuit would be. It's difficult to know whether they would sweep us in with the others that they've also challenged at this time.
And if I could, I would just add, Councilmember Brotman, you know, in order to show damages, in order to obtain damages, you know, plaintiff would have to first, you know, challenge the regulation at issue and try to get it overturned or reversed, and before even having the ability to ask for damages. That's why they typically seek, you know, either temporary string or preliminary injunction at the outset so that they can, because they, you know, any potential plaintiff, not just this particular issue, is going to want to prevent the rule that they allege is constitutionally causing them to expend money. They're going to try to seek to have that stayed before they actually incur any damages. So most likely, any legal challenge is, the primary remedy that they're seeking is declaratory or injunctive relief, meaning either a declaration that the law is unlawful and an injunction preventing, enjoining us from enforcing it. And again, there might be requests for attorney's fees attached to that, but the primary relief that they would be able to obtain is injunctive relief from our viewpoint.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, because I read that the Grocers Association was not suing Long Beach for any paid wages. I want to make sure, because that's a big difference. Like if these grocers are paying out the hero pay, and it takes, you know, a couple months before it gets through the Ninth Circuit, and then we find that it's illegal, we're on the hook for paying it back. I mean, that would be a very different story from what I thought I understood is happening with Long Beach, which is that the relief would just be to overturn the ordinance.
Right now, they're just seeking injunctive relief. That doesn't mean they wouldn't amend their complaint. We need to be realistic, but right now, they just want to seek to enjoin the enforcement of it.
I see. Okay.
Thank you. So anybody wants to move the item?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, we would need to hear from the council members and then get some direction on what provisions you want to include in the ordinance, if there's, if any council member wishes to suggest variations from the ordinance.
$5, $4?
Mayor?
Correct, the amount of the hero pay, the term, whether 90 days or 120 days, or if the council is comfortable just introducing the ordinance as written.
Is there any suggestion by my colleagues?
Mayor?
Ms. Devine? Yes, Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff for this outstanding report. I mean, to have all of this information in a week is absolutely amazing to me. It's comprehensive, it covers so many different cities. I mean, it's just really great, great work. Thank you so much for all of this. I brought this forward because I feel that these workers deserve the hero pay. They have been there since the very beginning of this pandemic. I think what was so shocking to me tonight was they had the highest increase in mortality. That is extraordinary. I mean, and scary as well. Imagine going to work and knowing that, you know, you could die, I mean, very easily. You could become infected and be one of the workers that loses their life over this. They, you know, everybody says, well, the first responders are our heroes. Well, these people that are working in our grocery stores and in our pharmacies were there. They were our first, they were there when we needed toilet paper. We all remember that, and food and water and how the stores were inundated with people. I mean, it was scary, very scary in the beginning, but they hung tough and they were there. So I think it's time to call them heroes, and I think that it's time for the groceries, the owners, the businesses to share the profits for those that risked everything exposure for us. And so I am prepared at this moment to support and approve this draft ordinance as written by staff.
Is there any other comment? Mr. Brotman? Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, thanks. I have two things. First of all, I'm prepared to support this as well, so if that was a motion, I'll second it. And I also just want to say that the, to Councilmember Devine's point about how great this report is and how quickly it was developed, I just recently learned that the guy who prepared this report is named John Bandek. And John was my student at Glendale College in honors economics. And if I remember right, he got an A in the class, which is really not easy in honors economics. right, he got an A in the class, which is really not easy in Honors Economics. I just want to say, can I take a little bit of credit?
No.
But I just want to say, I want to say thanks to John and to Phil, and and I didn't even know he was out there, and it's very exciting.
Is there any other comment?
I have a question. I, well, no, this is for introduction, right?
Correct.
So there's no roll call. Gillian, how many workers are there that are, let's say, qualified for this increase in hero pay? Do we have a number on that?
Mr. Najarian, it's about 1,700. So if what if you're looking for an estimate, if you consider maybe half of those employees, half of the total employees as hourly workers, it's about 1,700. $2,000 an employee, about $1.7 million. Three quarters of those, if that total number are hourly employees, it upward of 2.9, close to $3 million.
Of additional wages that would be
Correct.
acquired.
Using those assumptions, $5 with each employee averaging 25 hours a week for the duration of four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Four months.
Correct. I said weeks, didn't I? Four months.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, but that's spread out, that 2 point some million million is spread out amongst all of the the owners of these stores, not just for one, it's for like Ralph's and okay.
Yes, as I say, it's if you do the math, straight math, it's $2,000 for each eligible employee. You can see the total number of employees per store, and then it's just an assumption, half are hourly, three quarters are hourly, 60%, whatever it is. But using $2,000 is as per hourly employee.
So total will be 3 million, 400,000?
It could be. If three quarters of these employees we've identified are hourly, working 25 hours a week, they would and they would get $5 for the four months, it's it's about 2.9 million.
All right. Okay.
I will introduce the ordinance.
All right.
As is.
So, Mr. Garcia, so what we do? It's introduced, so we'll leave it to you to work on it?
It was introduced as written, so we'll bring it back as as written, and and council can have a further discussion on it next week and a vote.
Okay.
The only the only things will change are those corrections to the ordinance in when it becomes effective, if adopted as urgency.
And when you say effective, so it's going to be interfered with paycheck? You have to do such that it's not going to be hard for them to apply this matter?
Now, Mr. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as we said, we'll give a 10-day grace period so they can ramp up, and then they have until the the next paid period to make up anything that wasn't paid in those 10 days. Again, what has been represented to us, albeit from the representatives of the grocers, local grocers, the employers have already figured this out because of the 18 other jurisdictions. And so it would just be applying it now to Glendale. And that's why the 10 days was included.
But however.
Not something longer, like 45.
However, it has to be applied to the next paycheck.
It would become effective Wednesday. So if you had to go to work on Wednesday, March 31st, you would start accruing hero pay. The the, there's a 10-day grace period. So, you know, to catch up with any any paperwork they have to do, but it needs to be paid right away.
Okay.
And may I ask you a question just on procedure?
Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, so we're introducing the ordinance now. So a week from now, if it's a four-to-one vote, it's 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 effective immediately. And if it's not, if it's, let's say it's a three-to-two vote, what happens?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
In fact, in a month.
Mr. Garcia.
So, Councilmember Kasakian is correct. So if it's adopted on a three-two, it'll just take the normal 30 days to become effective.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, and now we go to next item then. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is ADF Management Services regarding resolution to affirm the city of Glendale's commitment to diversity, equity, and justice for people of all races, ethnicities, and national origins by denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment against Asian-American Pacific Islander community members. One resolution affirming the city of Glendale commitment to diversity, equity, and justice for people of all races, ethnicities, and national origins by denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment against Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, community members.
Thank you. Mr. Golani.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council, Councilman, Councilmember Kasakian already alluded to this item at the beginning of the meeting. We, staff is presenting this item in response to his request, as well as a mention by Councilmember Devine at a previous council meeting two weeks ago. So staff has brought the resolution forward for council's consideration, and I'm going to ask John Taktalian, our deputy city manager, for a brief presentation of the item.
Mr. Taktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. I'm not sure I could do a better job than what our two councillors have already done in describing the genesis of this particular situation. So I'll just try to focus on some of the facts. There's been a couple of studies that actually began at the beginning of March of 2020, at the onset of the pandemic. And ever since then, some data has actually been been tracked. Stop AAPI Hate is a national coalition aimed at addressing anti-Asian discrimination, and it was founded by the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council, the Chinese for Affirmative Action, and the San Francisco State University Asian American Studies Department. Since March of 2020, they've documented over 2,800 hate incidents targeted towards Asian-American and Pacific Islander community members across the nation. Specifically in California, they've documented 800 hate crimes, which actually is representative of the highest number of hate crimes in this category throughout the entire country. With respect to the type of hate crimes, 90% of those are represented by harassment and shunning type activities, with about 9% making up physical assaults towards, or I should say, against Asian-American and Pacific Islander individuals. Another report that was released earlier this month was conducted by the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism at the California State University San Bernardino. And what they noted was that there's been 150% increase in hate crimes towards Asian-Americans since the beginning of the pandemic. More specifically, hate crimes specifically targeted towards this population increased in certain areas, large cities that they noted. For example, 3%, I'm sorry, the percentage of hate crimes in New York rose from 3% to 28%, from 7% to 15% in Los Angeles, and from 6% to 14% in Boston. And what they noted was that those numbers seem to coincide with the the pandemic perfectly, with much of it occurring at the beginning in March and April. Because of these hate crimes, both current and leading up to the pandemic's onset, U.S. Representative Grace Meng from the state of New York reintroduced her resolution in Congress, which denounces the anti-Asian sentiment that's occurred in New York and across the the entire nation. To that end, staff has proposed a resolution for council that affirms the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and justice for all people and races, ethnicities, and national origins by denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander community members. That resolution is attached to the staff report, and I can answer, try to answer any questions you might have with respect to this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taktalian. Is there any question? Do we have any caller?
Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Okay, thank you. Is there any question or comment? From my
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, it is so sad. It is so sad to hear about all these hate crimes and what has become of our, some segments of our our society. You know, the saying now is hate is a virus, and it's like a pandemic, and we've got to to do something about it. And I just read a quote from, it was Gandhi who said, "We must be the change we wish to see in the world." And so I think just by working in our city to be dedicated, to dedicate ourselves to diversity, equity, is a very, very important goal. And I hope that with this resolution, the Asian-American and Pacific Islander residents in our community know that we stand behind them and with them and for them, and we absolutely are offended and disgusted by the crimes and the change in our society. So I hope that they will read the resolution and appreciate the fact that we are there for them and will be in the future. And not just them, but for all the the different communities and ethnic residents that we have. We are about diversity, equity, and that is our, one of our utmost important goals, I think, in our city. So let us be the the ones that start that change in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor, I've already said everything I want to say in the beginning, but I do want to reiterate again that this resolution is is mostly symbolic. It doesn't outline anything specific. We have already taken measures to do that and address issues of racism through previous action when we acknowledge the sundowntown legacy of this of our city. The only thing I want to reiterate is, if nothing else, this is a reminder to those out there who tried to denigrate, attack, and again, I wish I could have shown a brick. I couldn't bring myself to share the video from last April that was recorded by a family in La Crescenta of the incident where a Korean family was verbally assaulted by an individual, because I did I did not want to reopen an old wound with that family or with individuals. But suffice to say, it was disturbing enough, and the fact that it happened under our nose. And if someone is watching this and thinks, again, that it's okay to bring down another member of our community because of their background or where they come from, or because they're immigrants, again, the those people are not the problem. You are the problem. You are the problem. And again, if you believe that people who come from other countries who try to make America great, who work hard, try to acculturate that they're the problem, they are not, you are the problem. And if there's anyone out there who believes that I'm in the wrong in these statements, that's not a person whose support I want.
Thank you.
And I'll make the motion for the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, is there a roll call?
Councilmember Brotman.
We didn't have any phone call, right?
No, Mayor, we do not have any phone call.
Okay, go ahead.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is nine hearings, 9A Community Development regarding public hearing on appeal of design review. Board case number PDR 2004976, located at 2941, 2943 Honolulu Avenue. One, motion to sustain the design review board's decision to approve the design review application as presented in the revised plans, which address the board's conditions. Two, motion to continue directing city attorney to draft findings supporting denial of the design review board application. Three, motion to remand the case to design review board for further consideration.
Thank you. I guess I have to leave this meeting because I received from one of the contractors donation, campaign donation. So I leave the meeting, and I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
The city attorney tells me that I am still the mayor pro tem. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, here we are again on this item. If everyone remembers that we were at a two-two position several weeks ago, and it was recommended that the applicant return with his revised designs reflecting the, as many of the 17 conditions that the DRB had placed on this project. And because we're getting new information, I will open this up again for public comment. However, I would like to streamline the process. The appellant will go first, after after Ms. Toledo makes makes her remarks and any other staff in the presentation. I'm going to give the appellant five minutes. I'm going to give the applicant five minutes. And then when we go to public comment, I'm going to give two minutes instead of the regular three minutes. And I would request that the the speakers really focus on the new set of plans that we have and the changes from the original set that were before DRB and then before council at that time. So if that is not objected to, I will open the public hearing and go to Milka. Is this your presentation again? Couldn't get out of it, huh? Couldn't couldn't pass that off on the new planner? Okay. Milka Toledo.
Not this, not this time.
Not this time. Okay, Milka Toledo.
Okay, thank you. We're council member and city staff. I'm, as you indicated, this is a very familiar project to all. I'm in the process of sharing my screen. And I'm assuming you can see my screen by now.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so soon as my presentation goes into, there we go, I'm going to jump straight to the elevations. These are, the ones on the top are the the new revised elevations, and the ones on the bottom are the original elevations that were reviewed and approved by the board. So we're going to just go straight through the 15 conditions, and then I will comment on how those conditions were addressed. The applicant, for the record, has been working also closely, along with Chris Agardia and myself, to get to the point where we are today. So number, the first condition was to push the building down to lower to a lower elevation to allow street level access without requiring a lift or extensive ramp. And so the applicant has dropped the building. Actually, they dropped the podium and the garage levels by approximately 14 inches. In this way, the lift, as well as well as extensive ramping, was eliminated. The revised design provides street level access via a straight six-foot-wide decorative walkway leading from the sidewalk through the building's main entrance. And the design appropriately complements the site and the building, and it creates an inviting entry as viewed from the street. And it does not compromise, which was the the B part, if you will, of that condition, it does not compromise the approved SB 1818 concession as it relates to height. So the next condition was to redesign the front entry to make it more prominent and to establish a focal point for the front facade. And the, clearly, the front facade was redesigned to create a more prominent and established focal point. The revised design features, as you can see, a roof-covered element supported by columns spanning across the width of the entry, as well as siding around the double graph, double glass entry doors, side lights on either side of the entry, and horizontal railings over a stone base. The entry is modest, inviting, and it integrates well with the overall design. And also, the revised building entry is open. And also, the revised building entry is open too and visible from the street. But again, not monumental in scale or character as recommended by the North Glendale Community Plan. Item three was to redesign the upper level at the four building corners to reduce the overall sense of mass and provide greater articulation at the roof line. And that could have been accomplished by lowering the parapet heights above the balconies, introducing hip roof forms, pushing back the walls and balconies and other revisions that would accomplish that condition. And that's what we can see from the renderings and the revised. The upper level at the four corners, as you can see, at all corners includes a roof, hip roof element, again, to soften those edges. The overall sense of mass is reduced and it provides greater articulation at the roof line. And then again, that was accomplished by modifying the parapet heights and introducing hip roof forms that wrap at all four building corners. Item four was to increase the amount of cladding employed at all facades to reduce the overall amount of stucco and to consider emphasizing the building corners with additional cladding conjunction with the condition I alluded to on item three. That was done. The revised elevations includes both a combination of stucco and horizontal siding, as you can see on all elevations. The setting was incorporated at all facades to provide better building, again, articulation throughout. So if you notice, each building corner features brown horizontal siding, which appropriately wraps the corner onto the adjacent facade and it continues throughout a thoughtful distribution of the cladding pattern of both stucco and siding. Item five was to use smooth faced horizontal cement siding rather than the proposed synthetic wood. And that has been included as part of, as part of their proposal and identified on the material board. They are proposing, they have called out, smooth faced horizontal siding. Next item was to revise the color palette to include earth tone colors. And they have done that. I'll jump straight to the color palette. And by the way, these are renderings that you can appreciate what the changes are. So this was the previous, this is the revised color palette, which is consistent with the North Glendale Community Plan. Then the was to move the trellis at the rear, or excuse me, at the roof deck further back from the front facade to limit its visibility from the street. That was done. The roof deck, this was the previous, I'm sorry, this is the revised, as you can see, the trellis where the arrow is pointing to has been moved back approximately thirty-one feet from the front facade. Item eight was to clearly depict the street trees at parkways and that has also been done. So here is the landscape plan, which identifies the street trees and has been also reviewed by the city's urban forestry section. And they have requested oaks at the front. And so they are proposing the three oak trees at the front in the city's, right away, twenty-four inch box oaks. Number nine had to do with introducing tall vertical landscaping at the rear to buffer the wall adjacent to the alley. That was done. So what they've incorporated into the landscape plan is creeping fig, blue hibiscus, and fourteen, sixteen-foot tall hopseed bush. And in addition, there is a note included on the plan indicating that the planters are adequate for all tall shrubs. Item ten was to provide specifications or cut sheets regarding the exterior lighting and also show it on the building. And they've done that. So the lighting that is proposed is consistent with the building design and it's included on the plan and on the material board. Item number eleven has to do with submitting details of all junctions that where different materials intersect, including corner details where the materials turn the corners, and they have provided that information. And that is shown on sheet A ten of the plans that were provided of the revised packet. Item twelve had to do with that, ensure that gutters and downspouts are finished to match the adjacent wall color. They are proposing to do that. They've included a note stating that all gutters and downspouts are finished to match the adjacent wall colors. And that is on the elevation drawings. Item thirteen is to submit sections depicting both stucco clad wall openings and siding clad wall opening. They've done that. That is included on sheet A ten. Item fourteen was to submit a complete window schedule for the city's handout. They've done that and that's on sheet A twelve. And item fifteen was to revise the drawings to indicate decorative paving material. They have done that. And I've also included a cut sheet sample and you saw that on, or you, you would see that on sheet A two. The last one was a consideration. And that brings me back to the front elevation over here, which is to incorporate river rock cladding at the planter wall in the front. And they have actually included a low stone base, which ties in to the front facade of the building, which spans across the front width. So that covers all the conditions. If there's any questions regarding that piece, please let me know. But just overall, in staff's professional opinion, the project is consistent and considers the North Glendale Community Plan and design, design guidelines. Mass and scale has been reduced. And I described in the ways they have done that, again, by the recessed staggered forms, by the brick and roof and walls. They've incorporated roof elements at the four corners, the fenestration pattern, and a very, very cladding material. So staff's recommendation is that this council sustain the design review board's determination to approve a design review board case as presented in the revised plans submitted by the applicant, which address the board's conditions of approval. And with that, I conclude my remarks. If you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions for Ms. Toledo? I have one question. As, as you went through those list of conditions, are there any D R B conditions that the applicant did not address?
No, the applicant addressed them all.
Okay. Any, any questions from council? Ms. Devine?
Thank you, councilmember Najarian. You know, they, the, let's see, what was it? The consideration was for the river rock in the, in the front of the building to complement the building and the neighborhood. And it's so minor, Milka. I wonder if, can council, can we condition that, that they use more of that in the facade? I'm, I'm just, I don't know if I'm getting into the weeds, but it, it would soften the building, it seems to me, if they took the river rock up the front, the front next to the door, the doors. Because two of the, one of the conditions was, it was a more prominent entrance. And right now, the entrance is not that prominent. And I think if the river rock went up that, those walls, that perhaps it would be more prominent and, and be more compatible with the, the river rock feel of, of that part of our, our city.
If I may, councilmember Devine respond to your suggestion because we, if I recall, we had explored that. And it just appeared by incorporating more of the river rock, it would, it would be a little too heavy, especially, especially when there isn't river rock on other areas of the building. But again, if, if that's a suggestion, it's, it's very well taken. So I appreciate your, your suggestion as well.
Thank you, thank you. So we'll, we'll hear from my colleagues. So thank you, Mayor, councilmember Najarian.
You're welcome. Anyone else at this point? Because what I'll do is I'll, just to recap, I'll go to the appellant for five minutes. My patio is blowing away, by the way, so if you see me dash out, I've got problems. The appellant will speak for five minutes and then the applicant for five minutes. The speakers from the public will have two minutes each. And council, technically, at any point, if you would like to jump in, just let me know and, and I'll recognize you. So let's go to the, the appellant and give five minutes to singularly or combined. I'm not, I know there were a couple, several appellants signed on to this, but Mr. Michaels, are you the lead appellant?
I am the lead appellant and I will be speaking for all of the appellants tonight.
Okay. I, I invite you to begin your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of the Montrose, Rodeo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association and speaking for the lead appellants. I'm going to share my screen with a brief abbreviated PowerPoint, if I may, just to show images. This is the original project. This is the new design. I do want to go ahead and acknowledge that the new design does address the concerns of height. It does move the building height to about thirty-five feet, which is appropriate for the twenty-five-foot C two zone with the S B eighteen eighteen density bonus for one additional story. The design itself has been improved. It does have more of a residential look. The cladding does appear more residential. But as councilmember Devine alluded to, the river rock, there's still a large amount of cinder block masonry units, concrete walls, concrete surfaces, and that hasn't been addressed or addressed in the design. Looking at the mass and scale, the footprints of the three stories of the building have not changed. Again, the staff report referenced that there are breaks in the mass horizontally, but there are no breaks in the mass vertically. Looking at trying to reach a three D design to try and have a transition to the neighborhood and looking at a three D type design. This is a project at Hermosa, approximately one block away, which is another multifamily project. This is a project that the neighborhood associations spoke in favor of. And if you compare this project to the current project, you can see that this, these building forms do appear more three dimensional. The design as proposed now still appears to be boxy and monumental. There is no break in the mass in any three D structure, particularly with the long vertical facades. Additionally, I would like to go ahead and point out that this, the staff report and the designs do not show how this project relates to the existing buildings in the neighborhood. If this were a project just to the north in the residential neighborhood, story poles would be required to show how this would look and in, how this would transition to the rest of the neighborhood. From these designs, from these pictures, you see in these images blank parking lots on the sides of the building. And it doesn't adequately show monumental nature of this design compared to the existing structures in the neighborhood. We still will have this type of vertical facade, blank wall, that looks much like the existing building that's there. But this building will be, this flat wall, again, will be ten feet taller than what is there. When we have, in this appeal and other appeals, the issue of compatibility has been raised. And some on D R B and council have said, in an area where there is no definable standard, you can't have cat compatibility and that shouldn't be considered. The North Glendale Community Plan does address compatibility, but it also addresses designs that should enhance the neighborhood. And I'm looking at this project and I don't see that this design with a boxy monumental appearance enhances the neighborhood. Looking back to the Hermosa project with a true, with a visually interesting three D structure, different roof forms, different building masses, the neighborhood associations concluded that this enhanced the neighborhood and thus we supported this project. With the current design, we do acknowledge that some of the conditions from the D R B have, notably height. We would like to see more effort in the design, the cladding, to have it appear more residential. But we are looking specifically to have the mass and scale, particularly of the third story, reduced to give it a three D appearance. One of the conditions in the original D R B staff report was to consider removing the atrium. The atrium hasn't been discussed or addressed since, and that is a open area atrium, which is roughly about the size of a bedroom. That mass was suggested in the original staff report that it could be taken out and used to break up some of the mass and scale of the third story. Looking at the designs, I would note that the apartment closest to that atrium is a studio apartment.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have passed the five minute mark.
You won't hear me say this often, but it could be more appropriate to make the studio apartment larger, incorporate a true bedroom and find ways to then reduce the mass of.
If you could bring it to a conclusion, Grant, your five minutes has concluded.
I, that is my conclusion. Thank you. In conclusion, we don't feel this design is appropriate and we ask that you sustain the appeal.
Thank you. You know, you had the Hermosa design up there and, you know, as a matter of taste, I prefer the more traditional. Is this Art Simonian's design? Or is this a different project?
This is a different project.
This is a different one. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go to the applicant. Mr. Najarian or Mr. Basmagian?
Good evening.
You get five minutes.
Good evening, city council members. Karo Najarian speaking. Just I want to bring to your attention that this project complies with the city goals. If you go to the North Community Specific Plan in the Housing Section, Section three point four point one, citywide principle, it reads as, "Provide the balanced mix of the housing opportunities and services available and affordable to all current and the future residents, including, including those with the special needs." This principle is supported by the following goals. The city with a wide range of the housing type of submit the needs of the current and the future resident, that with this project, we are providing the residential unit and affordable housing for the, you know, different level of the, you know, the residence. We do have studio, one bedroom, two bedroom and three affordable housing. And we want to bring, you know, to have this community, the diversity of the, you know, residents in this building. The second, the, the city with high quality residential neighborhoods that are attractive to the, and well designed. And the, the, the product, the design of the Hermosa project, you have to look to this project that on the ground floor, the first floor, that minimum five feet setback is required. We are providing eleven feet setback. That it gives more openness and gives me the opportunity to spread the common outdoor spaces in the different locations because it requires that the common outdoor space to have a minimum ten feet, the, the dimension. And by this design, we are providing all that openness around the building and we are providing, you know, we are spreading these common outdoor spaces in the, in the rear of the building, on the two sides and the rooftop. And the other, the city with increased opportunities for the homeownership. And the city with equal housing opportunity for, for all persons and the city with the housing. and the city with the housing that is livable and sustainable. This project is complies with the community plan. And I responded, you know, I am reviewing this project. It complies with all these, you know, requirements. And as the Milka mentioned, I complied, I responded to all the conditions of the design review board. And by changing after the last meeting, the project it has been reviewed by the design group twice. And I got the comments and thanks to them, changing the material palette, you know, color palette and the material composition, the corners and the pitch roof and the four corners of the building, that it gives me that three-dimensional project. And this project for me, as it has mentioned, it's consistent with the shape and it's consistent with the community plan and the the five-feet dedication that city is asking for the front facing Honolulu. I contacted with the forestry department urban and they asked me to put tree, street trees. And this, it gives even the one of the points of the community plan that the nice landscaping plan appearance, which by this landscaper, five-feet-wide landscape area with the street trees, it gives me that, you know, it corresponds with this community plan. And it said the landscaping is consistent and open space. I'm exceeding that forty-score-feet private open space per unit. I am exceeding that amount. And and all the equipment and the trash room, it's all blocked from the public view. And all other comments, the gutters, everything I mentioned on the plan that it will be painted to match the color of the Genset wall. And this project even that the discussion having that residential area in the back of, in the rear of the property in alley side, you have to take into consideration that my first level of the residential floor is about nine, nine feet below the alley level. So that residential area in the back of the property, they, they won't see all the tree story of the building because the first floor is about ten, nine, ten feet below the street, the alley level. And I appreciate after all this long period going back and forth, really we are looking for approval of this design to move forward and to start, you know, building the permit processing and as soon as possible start the construction. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor Protem, we can't hear you.
That's why you're smiling. Mr. Jemian, do we have any callers?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I do have a caller on the line.
Just one?
Just one, correct.
Okay, let's, let's take the caller. And do they?
Two minutes.
If we could remind them, yes, that it's two minutes.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Susan Bolan, Susan Bolan, you're live. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Bolan and I served on the advisory committee for the North Glendale Community Plan. I really do appreciate the work that the DRB did on this case, bringing forth the fifteen conditions. And I especially appreciate that the applicant made a significant change in the building height, the roof lines, the front entrance and the color palette. It, we're getting there. However, the building remains pretty monumental and boxy with no step downs to follow the topography of the land. There is no breakup in the massing, at least not adequately that I can see. I, I agree with Councilmember Divine that the natural materials could be increased, more river rock or other wood-like products in the front of the building would break up that massing. And so the, the building as designed still does not conform to the North Glendale plan, in my opinion. But thank you for consideration of my comments and I support everything that Grant Michaels said in his presentation. Thank you very much.
You are welcome. Mr. Jemian, any other callers come in?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Okay. And how long is the delay between our live and the broadcast to the public? Can we know?
Forty-five seconds to a minute.
It's forty-five. Okay. I mean, I don't want, and the reason I ask that is I'd like to make sure we get all callers who wish to speak heard before we go to council comments and questions and deliberations. So this is we're getting this. Okay, let's Mr. Jimmy, why don't you not, well, inform me if any calls come in in the next minute? But we're going to move on to our council questions first. And if you'd like to have a question and a comment, you can do so at the same time. So who would like to begin? Anyone?
I don't really have questions, so.
Okay, so let's, then I invite you to make comments, then we can go to the comment and deliberation phase of this.
Well, I'll hold off until the others.
Anyone else? Any other takers? Mr. Kasakian?
Sure, I mean, I might as well. The hours late and both appellant and applicant have been waiting for some time. I'm sure it's not the way Mr. Basmagian expected to celebrate his birthday. So you know, in terms of the overall design, I, I feel bad for the architect and applicant in some regards because given the amount of time that it has taken for this project to get here and the required changes, I'll be honest, I, I haven't, I didn't really notice any of the creativity in implementing the recommendations of the DRB. It's almost like you show up, someone shows up in an outfit and you say, well, the outfit isn't great, change it. And they come back with just a hat and a belt at it, right? They did what was needed to do in terms of checking off the boxes. And now we're saying that, you know, we need to ask them to add more river rock. Personally, I don't know if the design necessarily lends itself to having more river rock. And I think staff mentioned that. I think a lot of the problems with the overall design and disagreements possibly could have started from just staff and how staff gave directions. And, and there was a comment made during one of the hearings where it was said, well, there is no real standard in that neighborhood, so therefore we can't object to necessarily a contemporary design. And that to me poses a problem because if there is no standard, then how do you establish a standard? At one point you have to say, okay, this is what we want dwellings and buildings in this area to look like. Otherwise you just keep chasing the same tail, right? Then you're going to have, and this building comes online. It's contemporary. It's different than some of the other things. You have this hodgepodge, but the whole intent of it is to have this feel. Staff should have imposed those and communicated those clearly to the architects and to the designers from the get-go. Now we have this building that you know, I think has some improvements on it. But in terms of the issue that has to do with the height and the massing, I don't know if much can be changed, given the SB eighteen eighteen guidelines. I did appreciate the comparison or the showing of another project, but I don't know enough details about that project on Hermosa. What type of a plot it's on, what it's allowed to be built. It's not, I don't feel it's an accurate apples-to-apples comparison. Certainly it looks nicer, or at least the rendering looks very appealing, but you know, the devil is in the details here. So unless staff can say that, yeah, absolutely, something like this is easily transferable to another, I, I don't know if it's fair. I mean, one of the things that I will give credit to the applicant for doing is that he is trying to provide affordable housing in the community, which I don't know if the other design is. Is the other design on Hermosa, Mr. Michaels taking advantage of SB eighteen eighteen?
No, it is not. Market rate project. And zoning for that is mid, or mid-density residential. Perhaps staff can confirm that.
Is there any response from staff or does staff want to chime in on that?
I, yes, Councilmember Kasakian, I'm not familiar with that project on Hermosa. I was not the case planner. I'd have to do research on that project.
And therein lies the rub, right? That we're trying to take that and compare it to this project.
The only
Go ahead, please.
The only thing I would add is with our inclusionary housing, all housing projects will include some element of affordable in them. So if this is in the city of Glendale, indeed it will have an affordable component.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know what my other colleagues will, will say, but you know, if, if we are deadlocked tonight, this just continues to get kicked down. And I think that like if that ends up being the case, then, and I'm not going to presume that I know what my colleagues voted last time, but certainly that was the case when I was serving as a mayor pro tem and we kicked this down when Mr. Nazarian claimed to have submitted the plan, so the one question I have is if this gets, if this were to get kicked back to DRB, how long of a process is that, Mr. Lanzethen? Where would they end up in the queue?
I think, let me ask Ms. Toledo, if, if the packet is ready to go, if we could take this, we would try and prepare the report to go back as quickly as we could. We've got a notice, so it's probably three to four weeks out.
Yeah, and, and if we were to kick it back, it would have to be kicked back with specific, would it have to be kicked back with specific recommendations? Would that be the case, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Toledo?
Councilmember Kasakian, oh, I, I just, you could do that. You're not required to. I think it'd always be helpful though to the DRB when you're remanding it to give them specific directions or concerns that you have with the design that is being presented to you. So they, they kind of know where you're coming from as, as a, you know, sort of the appellate body here, you want to give them direction to what it is you're looking for when, when they, when they hear the remand, just like you did on the the Vista Court project and also on the Corona project. You gave some specific directions. So you're not required to do that, but I think it probably is advisable to do it.
And so it's not, I, I can't, it's not my place to say add more river rock to something I, I don't think is. And if that's the only issue, I don't feel like it's appropriate to send it back all the way to the start of line. And if we're deadlocked, ultimately it means that there will be a delay until at least one more council person can weigh in on this. So we have gotten ourselves into this mess and I'd like to hear from my colleagues as to how they feel that we can move forward on this.
Thank you. Would anyone like to? Ms. Divine?
Okay, well, you know, the, the, the project on Hermosa is beautiful. It's a, it's a lovely, lovely project. But you know, it's difficult to compare. The width of that property was, was, I mean, ten, eight, six, eight times wider than, than this property. So they don't have the width to be able to really get that much articulation in their building. And I, I actually prefer it as well, but you know, again, apples and oranges. The river rock was a consideration and I was just looking, just kind of, kind of referring to the intent of that consideration. This building, as I see it right now, is, it looks very commercial to me. And I think it needs to be softened up if it's going, if it's residential. And I think the river rock would, would kind of blend it into that area of our, of our city. You know, some of the other buildings may be demolished in the future and, and you know, they could all work together. So I, I'm still going to really push, push for that. I want to say, first of all, that I really appreciate Mr. Nazarian coming back with the revision and taking, you know, modifying or putting into effect every condition that, that he was asked. And to do it in, what was it, two, three weeks was, was incredible. Quite frankly, I like the changes. I don't have any objection to the, you know, I don't know that we're going to, you know, I don't know that we can ask them or we should even ask them to change the height of a building. You know, they're going, it's SB eighteen eighteen, you know, we have to give, we have to give some credence to that. So I'm, you know, I'm, they did the landscaping. I, I do see, as Mr. Calvert taught me, modulation in the building. It's not, it's not significant like, let's say Hermosa is, but there is modulation and some articulation in the, in the architecture. I like the change in the colors. I think that makes the mass look less. So I think they have softened the mass and I think it's more compatible. But as I say, I would like to have that, that one condition. So I, I'm ready to sustain the design review board's decision and move for the applicant to be able to move forward.
Okay. With the added condition of the river rock, is that correct?
Yes, if they, yes.
Additional river rock at the entry and the front facade to okay. Mr. Prottman?
Okay. So I, I agree that it's, it's, it's a better-looking project than it was. I, what I worry about is that, you know, this is going to set a new baseline for that area of the city, for Verdugo City. And I worry that we're kind of going down the same path to some extent that we did on Central Avenue. And I think that's, that there's, there's a concern that we're going to create another, you know, boxy, stucco canyon. And I, you know, I'm not, I don't know enough about this to know how you go from this to a design that just feels more human, but I, I still don't feel that we're there. It does still feel boxy and massive to me. I, I would not even know how to give any guidance to the DRB if it did go back to them other than to say, you know, I, I would like to see something that is, you know, it, it, it's going to, it's going to feel homey. It's going to feel residential. It's going to, you know, feel like it's the kind of quality that we deserve as a city. I kind of, I don't understand why we're not able to get the affordable housing and get the kind of quality that, that we see in some other cities, including Pasadena. I don't know. So I would, I'm not in love with it. And I would prefer that it go back and get some more professional treatment. So I would be inclined to vote to remand it back to the DRB. And that's kind of where I am right now.
Okay. I see you have your hand up, Mr. Michaels, but I can't, I can't recognize you.
I was just going to ask if there was a one-minute rebuttal if I could offer before, before deliberations go too far.
Well, before we take a vote, we will give a, a short rebuttal period. But we're sort of expressing ourselves now and you can listen to, to some of the concerns that we have. So as for me, I I do see it significant that, well, so, I mean, to recap, it went to DRB. There were these fourteen or fifteen conditions that were placed on it. It came to us and I think a lot of the concern of the community was we It came to us and I think a lot of the concern of the community was we don't know if they're going to properly address those conditions, if they're going to address them and address them in an appropriate manner. And what we see, what we've heard and been presented with and confirmed by our planners is that they pretty much have addressed each, each of those issues, lowering the height, making the entry more of a focal point, the roof level element, the removing as much stucco as possible, the colors, the roof deck trellis, street trees, vertical landscaping, exterior lighting, the junctions at the corners, you know, et cetera. I mean, those are about eight of them, but there was about 15. So they were, they were addressed and they were put before us in, in visual. And the planning team, as I understand, did work with the architect in the last three, well, what was it, four weeks ago or when we last saw this, to, to address these issues. So I think that's, really shows, you know, good faith on, on staff's part and on the applicant's part to try and address these. You know, and I understand, and I don't know where I heard this from, might've been from a staffer, that the original, the original proposal was style neutral, that the, the applicant didn't come in and say, I want to build a modern building. But staff may have suggested that a modern style would be appropriate. We've heard from staff that it does meet the North Glendale Community Plan Design Guidelines. I don't, you know, I don't know where to go from here. I mean, they've, they've done, they've addressed the issues that that the DRB originally said. I'm afraid if we send it back to DRB, DRB is going to find new things and add new conditions, which I would have a problem with because that doesn't seem fair to the, to the applicant in that regard. And the big problem, I mean, listen folks, the big problem here is that SB 18 permits the concessions for the architect and the designer that may be in complete opposite form to what's currently in the neighborhood. And we can't do anything about that. Even if the concessions for SB 1818 were in direct and complete contradiction with the North Glendale Community Plan, we would be required to accept their design with those concessions incorporated into it. And I have been not happy with SB 1818 since it started. You can see a lot of its results in that Stucco Canyon, Canyonville or Stucco, whatever we call that, the Central Avenue where it's very dense, it's very high, there's, you know, the builders are smart. They threw in some affordable units and they're taking advantage of what our, you know, they're blowing past our design guidelines. And we're just stuck with that unless Sacramento wants to change the way they're doing things. So that's, that's where I'm at. I'm going to give, let's go to the, to Mr. Michaels for a three-minute rebuttal. And then I'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Nazarian or Mr. Basmajin for three minutes and then we'll begin. Any final comments by council and then we'll take a vote. I'll entertain a motion and then a vote. So, Mr. Michaels, three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian did go ahead and mention in his comments homeownership. This is an SB 1818 project. There is no homeownership. This does bring affordable housing to the neighborhood. That is something that the neighborhood associations have been supporting of. We have not challenged any of the 1818 SB 1818 concessions. We are looking at the design. We are looking to have an innovated design that enhances the neighborhood within the confines of SB 1818. The Hermosa project is on a triangular shaped lot. There are different constraints to it and the five-foot setback is within the zoning. We didn't challenge that. If the architect has chosen to change and increase the setbacks, that is part of the design. That is at his discretion. He could have gone with the five-foot setbacks, putting more of the mass on the first and second story, leaving less mass up on the third story. That is something we would have supported. We're looking at this project being the first affordable housing project going into a commercial zone, abutting a residential neighborhood as a very sensitive project. And we are looking for that type of treatment. We're looking for a design that enhances the neighborhood and sets a standard going forward for a good design and something that can be replicated. I brought up Hermosa mainly as a timely example, looking at the geography. It does have the affordable housing component as required, but it is not an apartment building. But it is a building on Lock Rosenta facing the same slopes, facing the same challenges that articulates the mass in a way that we've, the neighborhood associations feel enhances the design and is something we would like to see more of. That's why I used it as an example for this hearing. With FAR, the outdoor space, the setbacks, those are all aspects of the design. They are not constrained by any of the SB 1818 density bonuses. We are not challenging the height now that it is 35 feet. Yes, the elevator shaft and the trellis go higher, but with those in the center of the building, I'm accepting of those. The fact that the building podium has been lowered to 35 feet, which matches the 25 feet zoning with a density bonus of 10 feet. I'm comfortable with the height and I'm not challenging that part of the design. I'm not challenging the parking reduction. The, from the other report, I don't recall the last concession, but the neighborhood associations are not challenging the SB 1818 concessions. We are simply asking and seeking a good design that enhances the neighborhood. And as has been mentioned, we'll set a standard so that we can build compatibility and improve the design. That was the goal of the North Glendale Community Plan, to enhance the neighborhood. In short, we again feel it's incompatible and ask you to support the appeal. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Mr. Nazarian, Mr. Basmajin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to weigh in.
Yes, three minutes.
I don't disagree that the project that was brought up is a nice project in the context of the Montrose area in a five-mile radius. I'm sure there are products, projects that would lean that direction. This particular street is a business-dense, industrious, you know, street that may not be as consistent with the quote-unquote Montrose community. Not that it's outside of the region, but if you take a walk along that street, you will see that this particular design would do justice more, create more consistency for that part of town than any Mediterranean transitional approach. Having said that, I'm sure if we went at this for another three years, it looked a little better. And if that precedent, we could create a five to six-year timeframe for people to approach these projects, I don't know if anybody would touch them. I've been a very patient applicant, flexible, open to feedback. And to criticize something like this three and a half years down the line, I think compromises the integrity of the process to begin with. I think staff's done an excellent job and I welcome the feedback a month ago. We were very aggressive. We fundamentally changed the design. You know, I don't know how much I agree with the, we strapped the belt on, but we fundamentally softened this thing. And I can tell you with a high degree of certainty, we welcome anything that's going to make this more appealing. I think we've done that. So I just would, from the density standpoint, we modeled this in a variety of different ways to achieve what we need to make this project SB 1818 friendly and create a design that's appealing. This was the by far most ideal way to accomplish those outcomes. So we played with it a number of different dimensions. We believe that this is as good as it's going to get unless we go back to the drawing, which we would hate to do. So we would appreciate an approval to sustain our approval from DRB and be able to build this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing now and see if my colleagues have any final comments or we can put motions out or craft a motion that would move us forward. Ms. Divine, you had a motion, I think you had the thoughts that, that we could make into a motion. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to sustain the design review board's decision to approve the DRB application with the addition of the River Rock. I hope you don't mind, but I, I want, really would like to see that facade softened up. You can talk it over.
And would staff, would staff be working with the architect on the placement of the River Rock, the extent and the placement of that? Will we give that authority to, to design staff as divine in your motion?
That's fine. Yes. I think, I think it could add interest to the project as well as, as as, and make it a little softer in appearance.
Okay. And that's River Rock on the front facade or at least on the front of the building?
Just underneath the overhang on the two sides. So it looks, so it makes a more appealing entrance.
Okay. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll second Councilmember Divine's motion because I, I, partially out of sympathy for the parties involved and seeing this get dragged out any further, I, I just think that, you know, if we send it back, staff has given us their recommendation. Staff has been involved in this. DRB has weighed in with conditions. There were no, at the last hearing, there was no significant objections. Everyone said, okay, yes, these conditions are ones that we agree with, yet we still want it remanded to DRB. Now these changes have been made and we're saying that's not necessarily good enough. And I don't know if we'll ever get to a place where everyone's going to be satisfied. I know Mr. Basmajin thinks that the project is significantly different or a different project. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I do think that we're not going to get to a place where everyone's going to be satisfied. So in, in an interest of time and with the conditions that Councilmember Divine placed, I'll second this.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion and the second. Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman?
I'm going to be a no on this. I would, you know, I would just like to say, I, I understand the time issue and I feel bad for Mr. Basmajin and, and Mr. Nazarian. I, I just don't feel that this is, is the kind of innovative design that we want to set a new standard in Verdugo City. So I'm going to be no.
Councilmember Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes this item. Will someone call the mayor back in, please?
Will do.
Are there any callers, Ara?
No, no callers.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, no. We better not.
I know.
We better not. If he stuck around this late, at least we'll let him adjourn.
I was kidding.
Is, is the mayor still in the building?
Mayor is walking in as we speak. Mayor, as you sit down on your chair, we do not have any oral communication cards or calls. And the next thing would be adjournment.
Before, in the memory of Dan?
Before we adjourn?
Yes, yes.
I have to read two statements and this is a sad day, of course. This is about, one is Ms. Narina Avakian, which I, her sister spoke to me, I guess, a few days ago. And this morning, around lunchtime, I met the parents of Narina Avakian and on behalf of everybody, I said our condolences to family members, to her brother, as I said, mother and father and a relative whom I met today. This is really sad and it's with heavy hearts that we adjourned tonight's meeting in the memory of two young Glendale residents, Narina Avakian and Jacob Kavarian. Narina Avakian?
The wrong slides are up.
Let me get that up, Ken.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Mayor. The slides are incorrect, I think. There we go.
Mayor, we closed up and brought it back up.
Okay. All right. So I start to. All right. It's with heavy hearts that we adjourned tonight's meeting in the memory of two young Glendale residents, Narina Avakian and Jacob Kavarian. Narina Avakian, born on January 5th, 1984, was a longtime Glendale resident and was taken from us too soon at only 37 years of age. She enjoyed the outdoors and like many of us, she found solace in going on adventurous scenic hikes. She was a member of the Armenian Hiking Society, AGBU and ARA, where she shared her passion for both hiking and scouts with fellow enthusiasts. I would like to thank the sheriff's search and rescue teams for numerous jurisdiction, jurisdictions for their collective courageous efforts during unsafe weather conditions to search for Narine. Narine leaves behind her parents, Nora and Jeri, brother Narbe and sister Nazee, whom I met and I spoke to Nazee, the sister, and folk. On behalf of the city of Glendale, we share our thoughts and prayers with her family and loved ones during this difficult time. May she rest in peace. And this is not the only one, unfortunately. We have, if we can change the picture, if it's possible. So Jacob Kavarian was born on October 20th, 1997 in Glendale, California, Tushant and Maggie Kavarian. Maggie is the city of Glendale's employee that very often you see on this screen or in this hall, in this chamber. Jacob was a big brother to Joseph Kavarian and a beloved grandson, nephew, cousin, friend of many. Jacob attended school throughout Glendale, including First Steps, Glen Oaks Elementary, and he graduated from Glendale High School in 2000. and he graduated from Glendale High School in 2014. He went on to Glendale Community College, where he obtained his associate's in art, arts degree in political science, and was not recently, and, and was, most recently, I'm sorry, was most recently attending California State University, Norridge, where he was pursuing his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. Throughout his life, Jacob was working towards making this world a better place. He was a former lifeguard at the Glendale YMCA and recreation leader for the city of Glendale. He recently fundraised for the wounded soldiers of Artsakh. He traveled there in December 2020, just recently, spreading much-needed care and compassion and delivering supplies to the area. He was a member of AYF, having started in the AYF Junior's Glendale chapter and had various leadership positions within the organization and the community. Jacob connected with everyone he met and made the world a better place simply through his presence in it. He won, he was an adventurous, courageous, kind, compassionate soul who has left a legacy far larger than his age would suggest. Jacob will never truly be gone, as he will always be remembered by everyone who he met and the many lives he touched. With that, condolences to both families.
Is there a motion to?
Okay, that's what I'm trying. May I have a?
I, I'll move to adjourn in the memory of Narina Avakian, Jacob Kavarian, and Ms. Ness.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
They all rest in peace.
Yes, they're all resting peace, and.
Is there a second?
Has been mentioned Karen Ness, which was mentioned before. And, okay, yes, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 10, I'm sorry, 11:14 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.